Hey, Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is council comments. Any more colleagues having comments? Councilmember Wright.
Couple items. One is, I wanted to thank the police department for their diligent work in apprehension of the suspect related to the sexual assault that took place in Sligo Creek a number of weeks ago. I know that that's been, had a number of my constituents on edge and I think people will rest a bit easier knowing that a very legitimate suspect is now been captured and is in the process, in the legal process, shall we say. The second is, I noticed that one of the negative things about all the snow and the great plowing was that a number of the paddles, mainly they're on state highway, the friendly pedestrian paddle thingamabobbies have, most of them around the city have been removed by the plowhouse, probably couldn't even see them in the snow. So I know the one out in front of the library here is on the side of the road. I think we lost the one we recently got installed at Chicago is no longer there. So fortunately, I don't think those things are particularly expensive and some of them are actually laying on the side of the road, so it would just be a matter of putting them back in. And I know it's an ongoing problem with those paddles is the maintenance issue. But it would be good if we could ping state highway to put them in and maybe we could convince them to put one in. And how where council member Clay has been suggesting there, one should be, we could just suggest there used to be one there and we should move one back in, perhaps.
I like your use of the word ping state highway. I think that's a good way of thinking about it.
Actually, can I quick comment?
Yes.
It's my understanding that the state is no longer installing those because they just get knocked down and it costs them a lot of money and so they've pretty much stopped doing it, was my understanding.
There was that message, but then we got one put in at Chicago and Philadelphia, so I'm not sure that that's true and I don't think it's, can't imagine it's actually that expensive to basically drive the spike into the ground and mount those things.
Councilmember Clay.
So, I have a couple of things. First, thanks for looking into the droopy wire that I still have going across Boyd Avenue. It's another remnant of the snowstorm. Couple of those left around. So, one of the things that I wanted to come back to again, recurring theme is the people driving backwards through the circle. Interestingly enough, because the little skid steers went out and cleared the intersection, it was actually pretty good during the snowstorm and didn't cause people the trouble that it did in the December snowstorm. But nonetheless, in heavy rain or snow, people start going backwards through it and then, once they go backwards through it and decide that they can do that, they do it again and again and again and again. And then they go faster and faster and faster and faster as they go backwards through it. So, I think it's time for some enforcement. And again, I'd like you to send the officer that doesn't write warning tickets. So, that would be very helpful. I would appreciate that very much. And then the other thing is that I am starting to get some more comments from people about concern about the Sligo Hills Park, something or other traffic study of the county. And I'm getting two different kinds of comments. I'm getting comments from people who believe that the end result of the implementation of the proposal is that it will increase traffic in their neighborhoods and that it's robbing Peter to pay Paul well. And they're unhappy about that, particularly to the extent that it pushes people onto Flower Avenue because we know what happens when they get to the end of the state road at Flower Avenue is that they go on to the 18-foot non-arterial road that runs through Long Branch, Sligo, and come head to head and behave in not very neighborly ways in the middle of our very small community. So I get those people and they're, I think they have some legitimate concerns. And then I get letters from people who want to use it as a cut-through and they're unhappy that it is being eliminated as an option for them. And, you know, ordinarily, I wouldn't have a lot of sympathy for that, but here's the thing that I think is interesting about it is that it's not people who are cutting through from Bowie or Annapolis, you know, going through to 270 that are getting off their main arterials. These are letters from people who are using streets in an adjacent neighborhood to take the, what is the shortest route for them to wherever it is that they're going to. And so I think actually that is a legitimate concern that they feel like they can't circulate freely just within the areas right around where their neighborhood is at. And I think it kind of gets back to the issue of what we do with traffic calming and a legitimate purpose of that traffic calming being to resolve problems like speeding in the community and other things that are sort of particular to cut-through drivers. And so, I would like us to have a city response to the county and to include those two issues. And I think several of our community members have written very thoughtful pieces about what the different issues are, including that the arterial roads that they would like to push the rest of this traffic onto are already failing at several intersections. And I think that there's a, when you have arterial roads that are open, it's good to put people onto them, but if they're failing, I think we need to look at other ways to deal with this. And I'm sure this is going to come back to us again in our own communities and we'll have to continue to deal with this. And I hope that what we'd say is, you know, we want to keep roads open, but engage traffic calming methods that require that people slow down and drive in an appropriate way through the neighborhood on the public street.
If I can just say about that, that it's been interesting thinking about the proper methods for our involvement and response on this since it was a joint public hearing with the county and the public record is still open until, I believe, the 10th.
Yeah, the 10th.
So, on the one hand, wanting to avail ourselves of the opportunity to see all of the public comment, yet on the other hand, and knowing that once we have that comment in hand, that it will guide us in whatever we might do for actions that we, as the city, might take, also knowing that if we want to have any comment or influence into the county for their portion, that we need to do it technically, I guess, during that public comment period.
Really?
So, I don't know, but just trying to think about the best way to do it, the fact that we're kind of wearing two hats in this one. And since that hearing was Tuesday last week, that was one of the topics that I was going to discuss with the city manager tomorrow, you know, in our weekly meeting, and figure out the best approach for, the best way to have proper input in whatever forum we need to do.
I haven't heard anyone that thinks it's a good idea that lives in Tacoma Park.
I'll forward some comments to you. People, there's some people I'm reaching.
That think it's a good idea? Yeah. I haven't heard from anyone in Ward Two that thinks it's a good idea.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. And my colleague is Clay for bringing that subject up. I think it's an important issue, certainly in my neighborhood, and I appreciate my colleagues who were able to come to the public hearing on Wednesday. And I encourage the rest of you to watch that. It is available on the city website so you can see the individual comments. I just wanted to take a minute tonight to let people know that the Piney Branch Pool, which was closed over the weekend because the circulator pump had failed, is now reopened. I would suggest that you might want to skip tonight because the water's about 78 degrees and might be a little too refreshing for the evening, but it should be up to a good temperature by the morning. So it'll reopen 6:30 tomorrow morning. Actually, it's reopened now, but, thank you.
Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you. I too have heard quite a bit about the traffic proposal. A lot of people in my ward are exercised, I believe would be the way to describe it. And a couple of them have actually read the detailed study and found it very wanting. And that material's been forwarded on. I too support the city preparing a response. I think the county needs to hear from us before they go forward with it. And there will be tremendous amount of interest in, I hope, looking for an alternative solution than the one that was proposed. I think the solution that was proposed, either closing the streets entirely during rush hour or putting signs, "No Left Turn," you know, during certain hours, that kind of thing, won't actually solve the problem, which, as I heard when I listened to folks talk about it, was mostly cars speeding through their neighborhood and endangering their children as they walk to school because there aren't many sidewalks there, or their own parked cars, or cars that ended up in their lawn because they didn't make a turn. But speeding cars are not going to be necessarily deterred by signs that say "donator of the neighborhood." Those folks who ignore the speed limit are going to go through stop signs. Stop signs only slow the people down who are law-abiding citizens. So I think myself that the knowledge that Tacoma Park has, I know we're sometimes thought of as "speed bumps are us." There are a number of other solutions that the city has a lot of experience with that we could provide to the county if they wanted to listen to us, for how to slow the traffic in such a way that people in our Tacoma Park, as councilmember Clay pointed out, use those streets responsibly, I think, for the most part, and would be able to continue to use them if we had some traffic slowing, traffic calming kinds of activities, whether those were redesigning intersections, bump outs, serious speed bumps like we have, or some other solutions to make the roads windy. I heard a marvelous one that I hope the city might consider in the future for some of our streets, which is, on many streets, we have parking only on one side. If you also wanted to slow traffic further on those streets, what you would do is, you'd have, say, three or four or five houses with parking in front of their houses, and then you'd switch to the other side of the street and have parking on that side, effectively creating that wiggly street model. You might have to stick a little plastic post in the road to let people know that that's what's going on, but that would be an inexpensive way to slow some traffic down. Anyway, I think we have ideas, Tacoma Park has ideas, and I believe we could carry those forward to the county.
And if I could just add that on that last point, it sounds like a woo-nurf to me, and we all, the city has already implemented those on Walnut.
Uh huh. What are they called?
Woo-nurf.
Woo-nurf.
I believe it's a Dutch term. Councilmember Robinson.
In addition to the signs on, what are these things, the little paddles on the state highway that are down, I've noticed that a couple of the pads that are in the handicapped cutaways on the sidewalks have been nicked by plows. And there are a couple right across the Grand Avenue where the elementary school handicap ramp is that are sticking up, very easy to trip over, so you might have Public Works look at those. As far as the Sligo Hills petition and report goes, it might be, when I listened to the report and got the feedback from my constituents, there was, as you say, councilmembers Clay, councilmember Clay and others, some good analysis in there. And one was, one thing that people took issue with was that the people who were considered local were just on those streets and that, but that cars within three-quarters of a mile were not counted as cut as during the, if I've got this right, in the analysis of how many extra cars were to be put on Piney Branch and the state highway in Philadelphia, if I've got that right. Well, three-quarters, if you do the math, or the math that I've seen, out of the 700 cars that were kind of going through all of those streets in a typical day, they only said that there would be 50 extra car trips on those state highways, leaving out, if I've got, again, if I've got the math right, six or seven, 600 or so cars, kind of mystery cars that are our own cars that don't end up going anywhere. And that seemed pretty flawed, if I've got that right. And the other, the other, the similar notion was the sense of the affected area, that when the county council renders an opinion on this petition and then comes back for, or rather, renders an opinion on this report and then comes back for a petition of households, that those households would only be counted in the affected area. And it seems unclear to me, doesn't seem to be in the report, what the affected area is. So, if we were going to, as a council, render an opinion or a position, I would, I think it would be good for us, before the 10th, to say that we disagree with the nature of the report, not whether the results are something that we agree with or not, but rather that the report, in the way it was designed and carried out, is flawed because we are clearly in affected area being adjacent to these neighborhoods. And if the numbers are leaving out all of our citizens, then that's a rather significant flaw. So I would take issue with the report itself before March 10th. After March 10th, I think that these notions that are also coming up, like "don't close the grid," it's just a way to, you know, we're, an increasingly urbanized area uses a grid to have throughput of traffic from one place to another, that's modern traffic planning and that that's what we ought to promote, as opposed to closing the grid, which forces everything onto the arterials, which is really a suburban model, which, you know, is, I would question the validity of that model in our semi-urban area. Typically, in fact, down county, we're not in the same boat as the folks up county. It's a real suburban, and they can deal with, they do arterials up county, but not down here. And also, I just touched, the safety was a big issue in what I heard people talk about here the other night, that they're afraid for their kids and that they don't have a lot of sidewalks in the Sligo Park Hills. And so, I know that the county doesn't have a whole lot of extra cash sloshing around, and none of us do, but if it's a safety issue, that sidewalks might be an appropriate way to address that issue. So, those are some general comments, but I would very much like to see us put something in place before the 10th. That's all, that was the end of my comments.
Councilmember Wright.
I just wanted to, I had forgotten to mention the Sligo Hills issue, and I did not attend the meeting last week, but I've heard a number of firsthand accounts and intend to go back and watch the video. You know, maybe it's because I grew up in a more urban area, but the idea that we're going to, that some subset of people, because they live on the street, would get to say that there should be no cars on that street during certain times is just a bit foreign to me. I think if the issue is safety, there's a lot of, as Ruben said, there's a lot of traffic calming methods we can use to address the issue. And if the issue is sidewalks, from a safety perspective, I think we should build sidewalks and the county probably has a lot of speed camera money, like we have speed camera money, and it has to be used for pedestrian things. That would be something that can't be used for other funds. It might make sense to ask them to spend some sidewalks. And I very much would like to see the council come to some consensus around something that we can send to the county so that we don't each individually have to write in our letters, which is what I would have wanted to do because it's a concern to me and everyone that I've heard from my ward has raised issue with it. The one thing I will say that I'm particularly sensitive to is the residents of Tacoma Park because we do ultimately control those streets. So, the county could decide to implement their street closure plan and we could opt not to. I think that would be problematic. That's the one situation where I could see us doing that because if all the other roads are closed, then I think it's Ritchie and Mississippi and part of Hilltop are not, then they're just going to get, because those individuals on the county side got the county to close, they're just going to get that much more traffic. And so I think we'd have to relook at the issue, but I'm hoping that the county would take us more sidewalks, more traffic calming approach then to close roads. Doesn't make any sense to me.
I do want to wrap up our comments, but I guess councilmember Siemens would like a little rebuttal.
No, not really a rebuttal, but I think councilmember Wright did point out the one important thing to keep in mind as we move forward with this is that this is a joint project with the city council of Tacoma Park, only deciding about the restrictions that were proposed within the city limits. And the county council will be deciding about the, or the county executive will be deciding about the restrictions for those streets that fall outside of the city limits. And so, we also want to keep in mind, if our recommendations to the county aren't followed, assuming that we say that we don't want the restrictions, but as councilmember Wright said, if the restrictions are put in on the county streets, I think that changes what's necessary within the city limits.
Okay. We'll move on. Let me just make a couple of brief points about upcoming agenda items on the upcoming meetings. We don't have any changes for this evening. Next week, March 8th, we have tentative discussion scheduled and work session on the Small Community Grants Program and the Maple Avenue Improvements Project. Following Monday, the 15th, is Ward Two Night. And then, Monday, March 15th, that same night, we have the report of the Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee. And then, on the 22nd, we will be visited by county councilmember Mark Elrich, and we will have work session discussion about Tacoma, further discussion about Tacoma junction issues, and also a tentative discussion on the proposed policies and procedures for use of the auditorium. And then, Monday, March 29th, the community meeting, which is not a city council meeting, but more of a conversation about proposed change, request to state law regarding alcoholic beverage sales in Tacoma Park off-site. And that's currently on the rolling agenda as it being in this room. My sense is it will not be in this room, but it would be in this building. And that's not promising where it will be.
Bruce, if people can't make it to that and want to send in public comments, should they do that to the city clerk?
They could, but I don't look on this as, you know, it's not an official meeting, it's not a hearing, it's just a chance to discuss and talk about it so that we're going to have additional opportunities. So people shouldn't feel that if they can't be there, because I know it's the first night of Passover, that they've missed their opportunity to do that. This is just to open that discussion with the community.
Yeah, okay.
The next item is adoption of minutes, and we have minutes for November 23rd and November 30th. Would somebody like to move their adoption?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and then it's passed unanimously. It's now time for public comment, for anybody who'd like to make any comments on anything, I guess, anything, because we don't have any voting session tonight, so anything that's on the agenda or not. And if you please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to city manager's comments.
Okay. The next item is, we're going to be visited this evening by county council president Nancy Florine, but I know that she is not here yet. Maybe what we can do is, we will move on to our work session discussion, the annual report for the city arborist, and then when councilmember Florine gets here, we will break from our discussion with the arborist and talk with councilmember Florine, and then go back to the item with the arborist.
Bruce, back to Sam.
Sure.
Before Todd starts, I just wanted to, since you're here in person, to give you a big thank you for your efforts during the snowstorm. I know that you probably worked 18-hour days and were out there in some situations with a chainsaw yourself, removing trees from right aways and your power lines, and also very involved in two real public safety issues where tree fires were either imminent or starting and prevention of power outages to people. So I very much appreciate your service and everything.
Yeah. Wait. Oh, you better. Yeah, I'm sorry. We're doing a live GIS tonight, so I can show you, rather than, I do have one slide, the one that you've been, like, seeing every year. But I wanted to sort of show you a little bit about how I do my stuff. Now, it's blinking. Does that mean it's coming on or going off? One of the things we do, I mentioned in there, some of the technology, one of the things that we got last year round was handheld computer that I can have the GIS on, or it's, you can have the GIS on, and go out and, while in the field, verify and update this, update the inventory that was done in 2001, and is now slightly out of date. Got a few things. I'll start with the one that we all enjoy.
The blueberry pancake.
Blueberry pancake. That's this year's difference between removals and planting. And the colors on this aren't much better than they were the other way around.
Just for anybody who isn't familiar, the blue dot is the plantings and the large circle is the removals.
Is the removals, the area of canopy coverage that was taken down, lost through all the permitting process, waivers, permits, or undesirable species. And what I do is I calculate the square footage on the radius, on the diameter of the tree, and then I calculate the square footage of the tree we've put in, and I think it's like two and a half acres, the big circle is. Now, that doesn't mean that we've lost two and a half acres of canopy because trees are multi-layered, and it doesn't relate to the trees that have grown. are multi-layered and it doesn't relate to the trees that have grown. I do want to do an inventory at some point of private property because it's my feeling that in the city, we have very few teenage trees around. And so that our trees are forced to sort of overmature. And that's one of the reasons we look, this is still out of proportion.
Does that include the trees that fall or?
Yeah, yeah. Well, not too many fall. Most of them I get to before they fall. With this snow, we probably lost another thousand, couple thousand square feet of trees that won't be counted just because they're down.
And Todd, I think I ask this every year with that blueberry pancake image as well. That doesn't take into consideration growth of the trees in general, am I right?
Right, right. But part of what happens is that once you get a mature tree, you don't really get an increase in foliage. It's sort of, it's up there and it loses some and it grows some. It puts on trunk wood, but it's not necessarily adding more leaf.
Okay. Is that where this teenage tree?
And that's where the teenage trees come in, yeah.
So your goal is to have more teenage trees?
Goal is to have multi-generational forest.
Right.
And that's something that I don't, I don't have data to support, but I don't think I've seen sort of in my drives around town, which actually is sort of a good segue to, let's see, figure out what to turn off here. That was the inventory, and we'll get back to that. My permit data is here at the bottom. What I did, the colors of the symbols all stand for the same size range, eight to 15, 15 to 22-inch DBH. And we had, I think it was 340-some trees applied for removal. And let me turn some layers on and some layers off. And that's, the small dots are sort of the total removal permits. And for example, maple towers, taking down 20 trees. You know, a bunch of them are alienantis, undesirable species, but they're also adding parking. And so that's a development issue there. Place across the street, lost a few trees, just old age. And then the rest, you can see, they're fairly generally spread around the city in a pretty even pattern. And the concentrations are where there was development happening that would cause an effect. Then, what I did was I broke those down, and I'll just do the permits and then take my break. We have, I think, 47 permits. You can see that there's a big one. Most of them are in a mid-size range. One of the reasons I wanted to do this live is because I can't quite figure out how to put this out. But if I go to size of the trees, which is average DBH, I keep going by it one way or the other. There we go. If I do this and hit statistics, it tells me on the permits, those are trees that actually got a permit with replacement requirements as opposed to waivers or denials. The mean size was 18 inches, which is actually a fairly large tree. But there were not many of them. They were just really big. And there were a lot of small ones. So 10 looks like 12-inch trees were removed with permits. And the permit can be because it was in the wrong place, somebody's putting up an addition, it was ugly, all sorts of reasons. And that's the permit. And that's a mean size. Then undesirable species is, what's, the dots there now, and they again are sort of mostly under 20 inches. And again, if I do the attribute table and find the size and do the statistics, it says the mean in that is only 13 inches. So when you get a mulberry, people get tired of it by the time it gets 13 inches and they want it out of there. That's what that statistics says.
I understand that completely.
Then what is telling to me in the maturity of the forest and the problem that we're having in the forest is the waivers. 180 of them, compared to 42 permits and 47, and these numbers are, I'm remembering from having written undesirables, but 180 trees were dead, dying, or hazardous this year. And the mean size of those was 21 inches. So the ones that are dying are the big old oaks. And that's why the pancakes are big and the blueberries are so small. To me, people sort of, but it means people aren't taking care of their trees sufficiently. Or there was a period when people didn't take care of their trees. And we're just now beginning to feel the impact of that lack of care. And I'll go back, and it would be interesting, just, I can do this because I've got these permits, shoot, for every year, and see whether we're getting any change in the means, any statistical real variation. And then there were 40-some denials. And again, there's one big ones and so some of the colors, a little hard to see. Get rid of the parcels and maybe, you can't really see it much. But there weren't too many denials, about 40. And in the report, I mentioned the hearings and I seem to bet 50-50 with the tree commission supporting me and overruling me. And people, nobody's appealed an approval so far. It's only been denial, so I'm batting 50% on those.
Todd, maybe you want to take your break and then come back with the next section?
Yeah, yeah. Do that. Let me shut this down for a minute, turn the light on.
Thanks.
He's taking a break, and we're going to welcome County Council President Nancy Florine. So if you, whatever suits your pleasure, you can sit at the table.
Well, sitting would be good. I would be happy to stand.
If you do that, we get a podium.
I apologize for being delayed. This is my night of meeting with local elected officials. We just came from a meeting with the city of Rockville, council members and mayor, and the city of Gaithersburg, mayor and council member, so.
You've been busy.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And just let me say, welcome. This is your first time.
It is.
Meeting with us. We've had meetings with a number of county council members. I think it all started back when Tom Perez was our district representative, and he said, gee, he'd like to come and talk to us about various issues. And since that time, we've had a couple council members. And we've usually been in the auditorium, but that's still under renovation.
Oh.
We're hoping to be back in there very soon. So we're in temporary quarters and with our temporary facilities.
In your brand-new building. It's still a nice building.
But we'll welcome you back sometime after, hopefully, a month and a half from now.
Oh, really?
And also possibly see if you can make it to whatever we do for a opening of that facility as well, because we'd be happy to have you and any of your colleagues join us.
We would be honored. We would be honored.
So we'd be happy to hear whatever you want to tell us. And then if we have a chance to have a little back and forth and some questions and maybe see if we can get some information, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Well, that is, my goal with this certainly, mostly to make sure I know what's on your minds. That's the main thing. Again, thank you for letting me join you. I did get, we have a couple of things going on, not the least of which, of course, is the county executive's budget, which we don't have quite yet. We did get a presentation on some of the budgetary constraints that the council's looking at. And just so you know, one of my objectives this year is to make sure everything is really easy to follow in what we're doing at the county level because it has a lot of implications for everybody. And I, as you know, we don't get a lot of coverage in the press that explains things and so forth. So I brought with me a number of copies of the, oh, Rebecca Lord with me to help me, copies of Ike's budget analysis that he gave to us last week. Just so you know, the extent of the deficit that a gap, funding gap as county executive is looking at it. And just so you know, I don't own that piece of paper, oh, we have a couple more. Here, take the last. I don't own that piece of paper, but that's what Ike presented to us online with Tim Farstein, chief administrative officer for the county. So it lays out sort of some doom-goom about how that's going to be the background for the county executive's budget recommendations. I'm sure you'll be very interested in those, and I know we'll hear from you later on as to elements that will have an impact on you. But I want to, I just want to make sure you have access to this. This is online, and so if you have constituents that have any questions or whatever, you can go to our webpage and click to in the budget button, and it will have this up there and people can take a look at that. And we will continue to have the analytical pieces that our staff perform in each budget portion as we work through all that. It's going to be, it's going to be rough, I think. And best we can do is share information. And I know everyone will be, I would assume that every portion of the county is going to feel some pain as a result. Everything is on the table in this budget, unlike anything anyone's ever seen around here before, ever. So buckle your seat belts, is all I can say. And we, as elected officials, I think, owe a huge, shoulder a huge responsibility to our collective constituents to keep them posted and, you know, provide them with information so at least they understand what we are all collectively facing. And since I'm one of the at-large members, your people are my people, we all represent the same folks. And I feel very concerned that we help people understand what we're all looking at in terms of this budget. So there's that. We have, we have scheduled public hearings on the operating budget. They will be after Easter break, basically. And we have a direct call-in line for people who have phone issues, who want to just call in, concerns or questions or issues with the budget. And of course, we can all be emailed and everything else. So those are some improvements in terms of communication that I'm working on. If you have any other suggestions, love to hear them. We are trying to use all elements of the internet, you know, through, I'm not a Twitter person, but I have blog, and a number of my colleagues have blogs, we're on Facebook. We're trying to find every resource we can to encourage a good exchange and, as I said, to get good, honest, straightforward information out there. And, you know, we all know this, we all know people out of work. We all know people who are underemployed. And we, we all have seen vacancies in the storefronts, office buildings. It's a reflection of a very poor economy, and that's having a direct impact on our revenues. No question about that. So there you have it. If you have questions about that, I'll be glad to answer them, but I'm not the expert on it at this point. I've just been through a couple of these presentations. So I have some general information. But again, as I said, this was prepared by a county executive and his staff. And it's probably the basis, I think it is the basis for all the revenue estimates for next year. So.
You said everything is on the table. And my sense is that in prior years, that hasn't been the case. And is there, is there any broad area that you can kind of talk about what you've been trying to protect up to this point that may be on the table?
It's a little early to say, just because I don't know what Ike is going to say, and I don't want to get in front of that. But what we do know and what that closely reflects is, basically, we've used most budgeting approaches that we could think of so far to maintain services and not have to lay off or put people in a full-scale system. We just, the council just approved the last, a second round of budget cuts. So basically, that means we've reduced county spending by $100 million this year at this point in time. It doesn't, and so we did all the easy things, I think, that things where you wouldn't really see much impact. We had a certain amount of to-do on, right on bus service, you may have followed, we were reluctant to go there with the second round of budget cuts. But I can't say for the next round or for this next proposed budget, because I know Ike has got to make it work. Unlike the feds, we can't print money here. So we're going to have to make it, he is going to have to send us a balanced budget from his perspective. And that is, he's actually, I don't, his assumptions will be based on the assumptions that are out there right now, which is, includes, for example, an assumption that the governor's budget will remain unchanged. We've heard lots of rumors from Annapolis about whether or not that's maintainable. It assumes, I think, almost, the governor's budget assumes almost $400 million in federal Medicaid aid, which assumed a health bill. We all know where that's gone. So what does that mean in terms of trickle-down impact for us? It's early to say. I believe Ike's budget will include an assumption of revenue from a medical transport fee, the ambulance fee. We have balked at taking action on that in the past. What will we do this time? I don't know. If we don't approve it, we're going to have to either find another source of revenue or cut that much revenue, spending out of an already very difficult budget. And those numbers show that even with, you know, sort of, a goodly list of cuts, they still have a $300 million problem. That's already assuming, taking $100 million out of county operations, and that's going to be real. It's not going to be dump by more paper kind of thing. I mean, it's going to be real in terms of services now. And I'm sure you're dealing with the same kind of thing. So I commit to you to keep talking to you, and we'll work together on that.
Do you have a sense of how you're going to approach your capital budget in terms of funding? I know that at the state for a while, I had the sense that maybe they weren't going to do bond bills, but yes, they are going to do bond bills and, you know, trying to think about how you deal with something beyond operating.
Well, the capital budget, generally, we're in the middle of going through that right now. And the capital budget is easier because it is bond-funded. When they're talking about bond bills in Annapolis... When they're talking about bond bills in Annapolis, they're talking about pretty much, I'm sure you went in for bond bill for your building, your, I forget the name of this operation altogether.
The community center.
I'm looking at the Victorian picture in my head.
Right.
I know it didn't quite turn out exactly that way with the porch and all, but your community center, bond bill kind of thing, where, how they're, that's the kind of bond bills they're talking about, not about their capital budget generally. Those kind of grounds, I know, we're watching that with interest, because usually they expect us to match those bond bills and, you know, I don't know what we can do. So again, we'll see about that. But the capital budget, generally, Ike proposed a hefty increase in spending, particularly for school facilities, that we can manage, basically, the assignment of current revenue to pay the bonds for the capital project. It's a six-year capital program. But that's going to be easier to fund. I think that's sort of like the icing on a very small cake.
Yeah, because we had the discussions about whether we would go forward with our renovation of our public works facility, and that all the information we had was that if you can continue to do capital projects, it's a great time to be doing them, because money is cheap and the prices are down.
Yeah, and that's pretty much been our hope with the capital program. You know, they have, they don't always deliver projects as rapidly as you would have liked that they could, but at the county level, that part is bulked up in our budget, to be honest with you. It is the operating budget, though, that is really going to have a tough time. We're really going to have a tough time, I know. So.
And.
Again, it's just speculation at this minute. We'll get it on the 15th.
If I can just add one or two more things, and I know my colleagues will have some questions or comments. One of the, one of the capital budget items that we kind of came in on the tail end of at the education committee last week was the out-year for the CIP for Montgomery College. And I just wanted to make the point that one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we got the message across was that we knew that it was out-year funding, so that it probably wasn't necessarily on the radar for what's being dealt with right now, and we recognize that everybody wants to keep the funding in the budget so as to keep it in line for state funding, but that we've continued to have some difficulties in the conversations that we've been having with Montgomery College, or the lack of conversations that we've been having with Montgomery College about the changes to the facilities upcoming on the Tacoma Park campus, and wanting to go forward with them and have those conversations to it, so as not to end up being an impediment or a potential impediment toward that funding going forward, that we want to support that, because it's very important on that campus and in this county and this state to get those facilities that we need, because I know that there's a great demand. And so I've committed to making sure that we have the conversations that we need to with the college to hopefully get us all where we're going to need to be.
Oh, that's so important. And generally, speaking with the CIP, it's the first two years that where you've got projects, you know, about to actually occur. The later years are, you know, they're typically teed up, and there's a lot of, lot of things to be resolved before they finally, you finally get a shovel on the ground. So I would encourage you to continue those conversations, and if there's any way I can help in terms of facilitating that, please let me know.
And before you came, we had a good bit of comments about the joint public hearing that was in this room last week with the county and the city on a proposed, proposal for restricting access.
Oh, I know about that.
In the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood and in a portion, adjoining portion of the city. And this room was overflowing, the doors were open, people were standing out in the hall on both sides. Every chair we had for this room was in here, and there were a number of comments tonight. I know that that is an executive decision, but I wondered what the county council, what part you all have, if at all, in kind of thinking about overall policies about how the county does dealing with neighborhood traffic concerns. A number of the things that were talked about tonight were, gee, in the overall plan, particularly in a more urban area such as Tacoma Park and other areas down county, that it doesn't necessarily work to just keep, keep restricting access and put the traffic on the arterials when the arterials look pretty much like, like the neighborhood streets. Philadelphia, Piney Branch, you know, they're one-lane flower, they're one lane each way, going through neighborhoods with houses on both sides, that the intersections are probably already at F, and just taking what is essentially, in their report, seen as this kind of phantom traffic that comes from the neighborhood and going through adjacent neighborhoods to get where you're going locally and restricting that as opposed to coming up with other methods. So is that something that the county council grapples with?
Well, not really at this point. It's, it's an important policy issue, as everyone, we all know. It's, traffic is the one issue that makes, really can divide neighborhoods or bring them together. And I think this county has struggled with this issue for as long as I've been involved. And, you know, my background, years ago, when I was young and a wiser person, I was on the county planning board for the mid-eighties to the mid-nineties, and this is a long-term issue. How do you protect existing communities? How do you, you know, encourage a sense of place for them? How do you protect them from the intrusions that they see from others? And how, but how do you connect communities at the same time? And that's why we have this process. I reserve judgment on whether it's the right process to have, but it is a county process that respects, you know, neighborhoods' desires to protect themselves and to make it, make their communities a safe place for their children and all the kinds of arguments I'm sure you heard expressed the other day. I think, personally, I think we, as a county, are a little schizophrenic on the subject in terms of how we measure traffic and how we, we try to get everybody on the bus, but then we measure traffic capacity in ways that, that just encourage more pavement and, focus on more faster highway flow. As I came down here, I came through down Piney Branch to, yeah, Piney Branch to Flower, and, you know, I, I think our issue as a community is how do, how do we slow down the traffic so it's not so threatening and disrespectful of communities as it is today? And so when you find the answer, please let me know. Right now, we have this.
Can we try speed bumps?
That's a whole, but yeah, we have, we have a lot of things. Are they the right things? I'm not sure, but they're, the county has always tried to be respectful of the community vision for itself. And as you know, as a city, because I was, I live in Garrett Park, same issues everywhere. And so that's how that process works, and it's not an easy call, I know.
And if I can just touch on one other area, and I'll look to my colleagues. The, I know you're maybe finishing up with the CR zone.
Oh, I wanted to tell you, you have a wonderful person working for you, Carmen Lynn. She's just terrific, and she's fighting for you in the zone work, and has been just terrific. One of the best advocates I've ever seen. And so, yeah, we're finishing work on this zone to ultimately, I believe, please, if I can write her a letter of commendation, I'd be glad to do that.
You just did.
Yeah, you don't get her.
No, she's terrific. We're finishing work on that. We should tomorrow, and that will, may, not necessarily will, but may be used for a certain amount of Tacoma Langley.
Right.
Zone that's going on, and that's, of course, why she's been so engaged. But that is a while off. We won't be getting to that ma, this council will not resolve that, that sector plan work. It will be the next council after the election next year. So that will be, that council's project, to work on that. But I, I think we've tried to accommodate the city's concerns there, and she's been in it all along, and has been very, very helpful.
Good, because we, we had a fair amount of discussion about it, and I know we had our, our final points that we were trying to say, well, some more tweaks.
Absolutely. And, you know, I would never say never about this stuff. The sector plan is done as particular issues arise, but they will be accommodated. We'll figure out a way to make them work. That may or may not be the zone of choice for most properties. I don't know at this point. I know what, the property, the projects we're looking at now in terms of White Flint in Gaithersburg West and Kensington, which is more like this, this one, but not quite, of course, have, have different issues. And I think what we're trying very much to achieve with this new zone, doing it in concert with the master plan, is to, to generate a kind of collaborative program so that the zone achieves what the communities have asked for in the course of the master plan work. That's the point of it. And so everyone's worrying about the words to make sure that that's achieved. And so, you know, and it will be different in different areas, and that's fine.
My colleagues have questions or comments? Captain Schultz?
Yeah, because I'm Representative Ward Six, which is the area where the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan is situated.
Oh, you're in the game, then?
Yes, I'm in the game. And Carmen, I had a, really, thank you for saying what you did about Carmen. I had an interesting conversation with her a couple of days ago, and what she, she was talking to me about basically the outcome, or the apparent outcome of the CR zone, at least to that particular moment in time. But she also said that it's the ambition of this county to basically overhaul the zoning ordinance, perhaps in a year or so, sort of take a big, the big bite and try and sort of bring it up to date in many ways, and that, if I'm correct, or if she's correct, that the CR zone is kind of like a first step in that, in that process, because you're trying to create a zone that'll be flexible and that can be applied throughout the county as situations arise. Am I interpreting that?
That's a pretty good summary of where I understand the planners to be.
Right.
Of where the council is now and where it will be then, you know. I can't say for sure. Are you familiar with the county zoning ordinance?
No.
Good. Because the problem is, right now, it's pretty incomprehensible. It's been edited and amended so many gazillion times, nobody can find anything anymore. I'm a land use attorney, I give, give enough.
Really?
Yeah, and that's true of many. And so part of it is streamlining, streamlining it and making it clearer, and of course, that means changing words, which is, and in this, and that's, has its own implications, of course. And then the CR zone is being looked at as some, by some, apparently, I'm told, as a replacement for all the commercial zoning in the county. I view that with great skepticism, but time will tell. The way we're writing the CR zone, for example, is that it can only be applied on the basis of a master plan recommendation, to achieve the ends of that master plan. So you never know in my world, in your world, you know, what's going to come down the pike and how things are going to evolve, but that's our understanding right now. There is a rewrite program going on. When it will, when will it be completed? I don't know. Not for a good long time. It's really a tricky effort.
Oh, it's humongous.
Yeah, and, you know, there's no intent, though, to really disturb a lot of existing community expectations, but some people may feel that their expectations are being disturbed, and we want to listen to that, make sure that doesn't occur. But there are many, many steps before that comes to fruition. But the CR zone, I guess, is viewed by them, by the staff at least, as their first shot at making, bringing this all into the 21st century, and we spent a lot of time on it. And is it perfect? I'm sure it isn't, but it's, it reflects a lot of accommodation of various concerns, and I'm hopeful it will be, will work well. And if it doesn't, we'll fix it.
Okay.
We'll edit it again.
The Montgomery County way.
That would be us, yeah.
Comments or questions? Captain Robinson?
Hi, thanks for coming. I'm looking over the numbers. It looks to me kind of like it's somewhere 12 to 15 percent shortfall in the, in the gap, the budgeting gap. It's looked like 600, 600 to 700 million, and a total budget of 400 to 500 million, or rather, 4 and 1/2 to 5 and 1/2 billion dollars in your budget. So that's, those are the numbers I'm seeing, 12, 15 percent, something like that.
Wait until you reach the ultimate figures after the 15th. This has a combined, some combination of shortfalls in these categories between fiscal years and so forth.
Yeah, well, I know this is a projection looking far ahead, but I'm just looking at the numbers in a gross sense. It's 12, 15 percent, something like that, which is a lot of money, obviously, and maybe it's more, you know, when you get all the numbers counted, or maybe it's less, right? And I'm also looking at the numbers, and it looks like it's about half schools in the county. I'm speaking kind of as a novice here, but it looks like of the 4 billion, of 2 billion is schools, and another.
That's a good rough way to look at our budget.
Yeah, and maybe 8 percent is Montgomery College, which is also education, but on top of schools. And then it looks like about 5 percent is park and planning, and it looks to me like 35, 37 percent is general government, so, and then so.
Well, that's roughly.
Yeah, I mean, very rough. I just put him on the, so, half is schools, et cetera. And so, and I also had a note to myself about the commercial numbers, the kind of commercial, both revenue from commercial assessments and, and commercial entities, businesses in the county. Of course, a lot of people are saying that the commercial mortgage, the notes are going to be in very tough shape this year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're really concerned about commercial property tax revenue.
Right, now, is that reflected in these estimates, or is that in addition to those estimates?
I think it is as best they can at this moment in time. I will tell you, you know, local government estimates are slow to match up with reality. Basically, you know, people, they've just closed fiscal year eight, so we don't have fiscal, of course, of course, no one has filed their fiscal 10, 9, income taxes.
Is it, I mean, is the commercial, are you guys talking about it on the council, the sense of commercial, the scenario, that, that all the commercial papers, much commercial papers in danger in the next couple of years?
Well, let's, let's put it this way, we ask those questions. The experts, they're reluctant to, to jump to any conclusions until they have data, and as, as we know, the data is like in arriving.
Yeah, yeah, all right, well, that's, that's clear.
Just one piece of information for you to be aware of, and we'll work on, getting this clear. Basically, the way I look at, that we'll be looking at the budget to a certain degree is what we fund locally.
And when you say locally, what do you mean?
The county. We fund about, I think it's about, nearly about $3 billion of county expenditures from local taxes of one sort or another, whatever. And then, then on top of that is state allocation money and federal money. It comes, it adds up to about 4.4 billion.
Okay, so the, what the, what the county generates through income tax and property tax and others is about 3 billion, that's what?
Yeah, I think so.
That sounds about right. I had, I had a couple other notes here, I'm just going to kind of throw ahead so that I can let my colleagues. I'm wondering where the cities are in these, in these budgets. I know we're 15 percent of your population, of the county population. Do you ever break out what cities do in your Do you ever break out what cities do in your budgets or how we play a part? Because this is, we had a...
I don't know where you're going with this.
No, I don't know. No, I'm not, actually Nancy, I'm not going there. I'm not going there. You know, I would, you may know that I would go there, but I'm not.
Oh, I know.
But, but, but I wonder, when we get presented by county, with county numbers, what, where do the cities fit in? I don't see cities in this, in this document anywhere. And I wonder if, when you come back next time, or if there are other ways that we can be in the mix, so that we know what part we play. Because my last point was, do you, do you have any general comments about our municipal responsibilities and how they play with the county responsibilities and our relationship in general, where it's going? And there, you don't have to go over to the old, that, the place, that topic which shall not be named.
Ah, no, no, no.
But, but just in general, what's the relate, what are you, what's your vision of the relationship?
You forget, I'm a former mayor. I'm just like one of you guys. I, I don't know the answer to your question. It's an interesting one and one that if, if I can burden you to remind me, if you send me an email, I'll ask the staff if we have that information accessible. We don't think, we just think across the board generally on county revenue. And of course, and we have a whole range of either municipal structures, special taxing districts in the county, a whole range of, of unique ways to fund community benefits one way or the other. So like, for example, Friendship Heights, which is a special taxing district, is not an incorporated municipality.
Is there representation in Friendship Heights, just from my own edification?
Well, they elect people.
Yeah.
They do?
Yeah.
So they have a count?
They have a mayor.
They have, they have the whole shebang. So in any event, it, there are actually, I've seen charts that show sort of tax rates paid by residents throughout the county, allowing for all the municipal variations. And it's, gosh, there, there's huge variation throughout the county if that's what you're going to in terms of tax burden for various sorts of things. So it's, there's no simple answer to how the, at least for how the residents shoulder taxes and fees. And of course, in terms of services and benefits, that's always, I'd like to think, a more or less negotiated effort, depending upon where you are and what your issues are and what your community needs and so forth. So we've tried to be collaborative with you guys. I think we paid for your bridge, didn't we? Was that recon or help? We did something on your bridge.
Yes. Thank you. And thank you for that. But I, my sense was that was the last chicken into the barn door before it closed.
Very smart, very smart. And that's certainly true with Gaithersburg, certainly true with Rockville. And there are always things that come up that we try to work together on. So is there a pure math about that? I'm not sure that there is, if that's your question.
No, I, you, you addressed my question to some extent in a way that was very satisfying. In other words, that you, you know that there are different, different models for provision of services throughout the county, and some are one type and some are the another type. I'm kind, I'm interested in learning more so that, and that's my, that's, that relationship between the county, which is a very large entity, a million people or what have you nearly, and the little cities. And, you know, we provide things to our residents and constituents, and some ways are exactly the same and other ways maybe aren't exactly the same. And we have a lot of conversations about what's the most efficient way.
Yeah.
Or what's, you know, so I think it's an important topic and I, I, I look forward to hearing more from you.
You know, it's, it's not a purely, you know, everybody, every community is different. Every, certainly every municipality has a different sense of self, how it's going to work with the county, how it's going to go directly to the state for everything. It just depends what's an important service to its collection of constituents, how it operates, they're all different. Gosh, and it's certainly something the municipal league might want to put together as well. Because there, you, we all are different. I know this. And I, I don't think our residents understand.
Right.
That's for sure, in terms of, you know, who pays more and what you get.
You know, Broward County in Florida decided some years back that they wanted every person in the county to be in some municipality. And it wasn't like that. There were large unincorporated areas. So they went on, they, they decided that that was a policy direction they wanted to take. And now, lo and behold, all but a few thousand people in Broward County, which includes Fort Lauderdale and, are, is in some city or another. I'm not, I don't know a lot of details about that. My assumption is that they perceive that a municipal delivery system, service delivery system for everybody makes sense and that a county delivery system makes sense. And I'm, I'm curious personally to know how that's all kind of playing out.
Interesting. Well, we could have a very lengthy conversation about this.
Yes, we could.
I would just simply say, what I've discovered from being on a steering committee of the National Association of Counties is that every single county in this country is different.
Sure.
In terms of powers, in terms of its relationship to municipalities, in terms of the range of services it provides. Remember, it's not just counties, it's states, who does what. It's hugely different in Virginia.
Yeah.
It's different everywhere. Where I grew up, I can't get any of my relatives to think, appreciate in any way how incredibly important I am.
Where did you grow?
Up in Massachusetts, the counties are...
Where there are no counties.
They, well, they have them, but they don't do anything. I think they run the sheriffs.
Courts and jails.
Something like that. So, you know, it's very different everywhere you go.
Right.
What I think is important for us and for our residents is that we provide them with access to decision-making, information about what's going on, and help them define their own sense of place and community. Because I think that's what makes, makes us a strong place.
Congressman Robinson?
Thank you. And thank you very much for coming here tonight. I really appreciate you taking time out from your busy schedule to spend a few minutes here in Tacoma Park. And also appreciate your dedication to the public service and the work you do on the council. I know that right now you're facing some difficult times and it's, it's good of you to hang in there and also take a leadership role in that at this point. Just one quick question, and I know you can't answer for the rest of the council, so I'll ask you just personally, where you see economic development, commercial economic development fitting into the budget in this difficult, difficult time? Because, you know, that's, that's what builds for the future, to help resolve the problem.
Yeah, well, you know, our unemployment rate is an all-time high in Montgomery County. It's gone down a little bit in the past couple of months, but we've never even had to talk about that before. I think this whole recession environment is making us appreciate the deep connection between jobs and revenue base. I mean, it's pretty obvious, but we've never really had to talk about it much. And so it's a huge issue, I think, for this county, how we support, you know. I'm on, on Facebook, I'm always hearing about downtown Tacoma Park now. You've got a very active person, whoever it is who's, who's involved. And, you know, we, we need to support our businesses. We need to remember that they provide jobs and services and a sense of place to us all. And the challenge is finding that right balance all the time between community requests and demands and so forth, and allowing them to flourish. We're having a heck of a time making small business people feel wanted in this county because of what they see is very heavy regulatory obligations that cost them a lot of money. So that's a challenge for us, because we all try to do the right thing. And I, I just think it's important for us to listen to the demands, the concerns that those kinds of business people have, have with us. If you talk to folks who run a business, I know if any of you are business people, it is a, it is a challenge. So we have to always be careful about our regulatory initiatives to make sure that we find, find the right balance. And the big picture is how the county and the state can operate to, again, to create the right environment that encourages the right kinds of jobs here. You know, a good job is the best social welfare program. And that is what we need to confront. We're putting a lot of money into education in this county regardless of what happens through this budget cycle. It will always be a priority. And how we get kids prepared for and have access to good jobs is equally important. And I think a conversation we're working on now.
Well, I appreciate your keeping the downtown Tacoma Park area in mind as you go forward with the budget, but also the New Hampshire Avenue corridor.
Yeah, yeah.
Very important.
It's long been important.
And I think FYI, three of us up here are small business owners.
All right. Okay. I thought, I thought you were, yeah.
Congressman Clark?
So I have a solution for your family.
Good!
So my parents think that I'm more important than I actually am.
Oh!
And here's, here's, here's the way you get there. I let them ride in my car in the Fourth of July parade, and I got them shirts that said Colleen's mom and Colleen's dad. And then they got to ride in the parade and everybody waved at them. They're like, oh, you're Colleen's mom, it's so nice to meet you. And they treated them like royalty. And they had the best time. And, and so I thought that, that was very effective. So I'm very happy with my council decision.
Well, I've been going to that parade, one way or the other, since nineteen eighty, which is when we first moved to Montgomery County. And I, I think it's the best parade in the country.
Well, there you go. And so, yes, my, that was very good for my parents. But anyway, a couple of questions I want to ask you in this statement I want to make. So the first one is the counties ask the cities if they would support, I guess Montgomery County asks the cities if they would support the request to the legislature regarding the maintenance of effort for the schools. Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Maintenance of effort for the schools. And I just wondered if, when you did that as a council, that you got, if you got a lot of blowback from parents from the schools? So this is my question, first question. Second question, just because I don't get, I don't get any constituent feedback on it, so I was curious to know what your constituent feedback is. So I, I went to the fire department board meetings for a long time, and they were on separate evenings. And we talked about the ambulance fee. And clearly, all the volunteer fire department board members thought it was a horrible idea.
Of course.
But in all honesty, I have yet to hear anyone articulate a reason why it's a bad idea. So I would like to know why the council rejects it all the time. Because I, I, I'm, maybe there's something there that I don't see, but I, you know, from my perspective, I don't see it. And then the, the third thing I wanted to say is that, and it kind of, kind of goes a little bit along the lines of what Dan was saying, is that I don't think that we've done a very good job as cities and, cities and counties in the state and even between Tacoma Park and other cities in Montgomery County, in talking about how partnerships could be more effective. And I think part of it's just the way that we're structured. And the, the structure itself sets up a duplication, because to become a city, you essentially have to duplicate the efforts. Now, in our case, we, parts of us existed before other parts of the county, and so we weren't actually the ones who did the duplicating. But if at some point you wanted to become a, a city, I mean, you essentially would have to agree to take on activities that the county was doing. And the whole system in this, in the state of Maryland itself is set up as a duplication. And I grew up in, in California, where cities and counties have, you know, delineated duties fairly well. And when you become a city, you incorporate and you capture all of the tax base that are related to a specific set of responsibilities. You may not perform those yourself. You may lease back, like, you capture the fire department, for example, and the police department, and you may not perform those yourself, but you lease back those, those from the city, but they're, but they're, they're delineated. And the, typically, the counties run the schools and the sheriff's department and the jails and the courts and, you know, things like that. And cities tend to do like potholes and your local park, you know, the little, the small parks. Counties do the big regional parks. And there's some delineation. I think it would be worthwhile talking more about what a more partnership-based approach would, would look like and what that might look like in the city. And I don't know if it would be a Broward County model or a California model or other kinds of things. But I think in addition to having all of the tax and services duplication conversations, this might be the time to look at how we could all do business a little bit differently and to, to look and see if there's a way that we could refocus on the things that make sense based on what kinds of services people want to see delivered at a local level. What are the economies of scale of doing things at the county level versus doing things at, at a, a smaller city level? I mean, to me, obviously, like, large environmental issues, large economic development, the schools in this area, affordable housing, I mean, there's all kinds of things that are like, well, they're broader regional issues. And there are things that are just much more localized issues. And it'd be, might be interesting to look at what a combination of the existing city structure and maybe the special taxation districts would look like to kind of delineate out some of those, some of those costs. And, you know, I, obviously, it's not going to fix our budget issue right now, but it, it might be the impetus at this point to look at what are some of the structural, we have, there's some structural benefits to the way that we do things, and what are some of the structural challenges to it? And could we fix them?
Well, I think those are good, good questions. We'd like to think we work in partnership on many things.
I don't mean that we've done it all, but I mean, we could do better.
But I'm sure, there's always a, a different way. And it's, it's certainly valid, valid concern. Is there, is there one way? I suspect it just depends on who you speak with, but these are all, that's a really valid question. And point to, to raise, and we'll, we'll, we'll be talking about a better way to run a government in the next year, I think. Ambulance fees, I don't know where that's going to go. I think there's going to be more inclination to go there this time than there has been in the past, but we'll see what's on the table. The volunteers would tell you that, I think really, they're concerned about their ability to raise funds and feel that if they're charging residents for a service, that the residents would be less likely to contribute, make a donation. They also have advanced the concept that, that people won't call 911 if they feel that there's a cost. And no matter how much you explain that it's only a cost that goes to insurance, it's difficult to carry that point home. So those are the classic arguments I have heard in the past. I suspect that given what the fire and rescue folks are looking, going to be looking at in this budget, I, I can't predict how that would go. But I know that those are the concerns that have been raised, and particularly in communities where they've particularly vocal and active volunteer fire and rescue squad. And I gotta say, these people do fabulous work.
Yes, they do.
They, you know, they do save us a boatload of, of money. It's all volunteer, it's all commitment, and it's all spirit. And who could argue with them? I mean, they're great. If I had time, that's what I would do. And if I could get over the blood thing, and I have. But, you know, really, and so we're very torn about this. The challenge for us is by and large, all our neighbors charge ambulance fees. In fact, your residents probably more than anyone, well, anyone that lives on the edge of the county. Howard does not charge, have an ambulance fee. But the district does, and so does Prince George's. So if they, we all have, you know, agreements for service. So if Prince George's facility comes over and collects one of your residents to go to a hospital under our cooperative arrangements, that would be charged some kind of fee. Same idea from the district. BCC Rescue Squad Bethesda, they service Northwest DC. But those people don't get, charge an ambulance fee because BCC serves them. But if they call 911 in the district and a district ambulance squad comes... But if they call 911 in the district and a district ambulance squad comes to get them, they will be charged. So there you have it. We're a world of inconsistencies. But commitment to serving residents. So how we bridge that gap with the fiscal times, we'll see where that goes. On maintenance of effort, the fiscal year 10 situation, we are looking at a penalty of $23.5 million. I believe that's being worked out pretty successfully in Annapolis right now. We've not heard a lot of pushback. If you, in fact, I had never even heard of maintenance of effort until this past year. I've been doing this for a while. I should know about this issue. The state has this bizarre way of how they calculate the local jurisdiction's obligation to fund education. And you get no points for any efficiencies. You get no points for anything. Basically, you have to pay, put in what you did the year before plus X, Y, Z for other purposes, and then there's a whole slew, apparently, of administrative interpretations of what counts and what doesn't. So once you unwrap that onion, as we have begun to do it, nothing is obvious, except that we're going to have a hard time. We couldn't do it under the way the state decided to interpret the rules this year. And we're working collaboratively with this state and with counties across the state for what's going to happen in the future. Right now, what they didn't, the point of the rule was to protect school systems from counties who say, oh, the state's coming along with all this cash, that means we'll put all our money into, what, water parks or, you know, whatever. And so they wanted local governments to stay steadfast in their commitment to schools. Now, we here in Montgomery County hear that, and they say, what are you talking about? No one could be more committed to education in terms of transfer of local dollars into educational achievement. So there's always some details to be sorted out, and that's where we are right now. But we haven't heard a lot of pushback. We're working really closely with the employee representatives and everyone, everyone understands what the issues are. It's been a very, really pretty collaborative effort right now. So we'll see. There's, some things will always happen, as you know, down in Annapolis. But the situation is so dire at every level, and I'm almost afraid to read the newspapers for what they're doing in Annapolis in terms of education funding, because I don't know what it means for us. What I do know is that we won't find out until the end of the session. And so whatever Ike proposes in his budget will be based upon assumptions that are good when he issues his budget in two weeks, but may not be validated by whatever the General Assembly ends up doing. So I don't know. And their information is just like ours, it's changing all the time. They, apparently, they got a very dire briefing about something the other day. And, you know, and we hear about it later. So it's a lot to follow, and as I said, best we can do is keep you posted.
Questionnaire Ray.
Thanks for being here with us. I also grew up in Massachusetts, and I moved here, I was shocked that county did so much and...
I know, really bizarre.
And it has pluses and minuses. You know, it's in Massachusetts, as you know, all these small school systems are divided up, and you can have big inequalities between towns around schools.
Completely.
And we don't really have that, at least in Montgomery County. So there's good, there's pluses and minuses, too. I had two questions. One was, you know, when I look at this number, the numbers going forward, it's bad this year, and it kind of goes up and down in the future, but it seems like there's kind of a structural issue. And so the question for, I have is sort of, is it a matter of just cutting this year and then kind of re- equating the normal? Or is, are there, have you had new ideas or thoughts about how we should do things drastically different in the county to kind of deal with this issue?
Well, Josh, you put your finger on one of the problems. I think you're looking at page three here.
Yep.
If you look at the bottom line of total uses in that sheet, it's this page here, really the, really, just the second page in. Bottom line, line 23, as you who read budgets know, brackets are bad.
Brag, brackets are bad.
A parentheses. And basically, it shows a negative relationship between revenue, projected revenue and projected expenses.
And those aren't, that's not $608.
It is not. Everything's in thousands. So one, two, three, four, five, we think six years wise in our world, yeah, you're right. And something is going to have to change. And this is the year that we've really been faced with a smack dab in the face. So you're right. I mean, what you've said, what Colleen said, is really on target. Are there new ways of doing things that we need to consider? Is there a structural issue we need to evaluate? Are we duplicating things? Are we, you know, I think we do our best to look at efficiencies and so forth. Have we done enough? Probably not. I think this is a great opportunity for us, frankly, to, as I said, to revisit the way we conduct business. As a county, how we operate, are we really operating on the best model? And I think it's something to give some serious thought to. We won't get done now, but I think we need to start thinking about that for the future.
And my second question is, we've been focused on the numbers, which leaves you very negative, but are there things that you're hopeful about from Montgomery County in the next few years?
Well, you know, I think we're putting in place plans for great things. We're, you know, we've got the purple line alignment. And the goal, especially for you guys, that's going to be a great support to revitalization, particularly in Langley Park and Line Branch. Huge. That's going to be a huge investment that's going to help that whole vicinity become, show that we care. You know, we've done some work, you know, we got money, the Tiger Grant money for the transit center. So that's good. And that's a significant chunk of change. Let me see how much we do. $12.3 million for the transit center in Tacoma and Langley. So that's great. They need that kind of, you know, very visual investment. And the purple line will come along, and that will triply help both public perception and on-the-ground activity. So that's a great thing. And we're looking at that kind of thing in other parts of the county, of course, the Corter City's Transit Way. We're approving, about tomorrow, we'll more or less approve the White Flint Sector Plan that uses the CR zone and will really allow for, I hope, a vibrant new way of that area to evolve. The meeting I came from up in Rockville, the reason I was late, was talking with the cities about the Gaithersburg West Plan, which is a science city vision. I'm not sure about the numbers that we will approve, but it's a statement of where this county wants to position itself in terms of jobs, in terms of excitement. You know, they just signed, Johns Hopkins the other day, signed a memorandum of understanding with the county. It signed a memorandum, it announced a deal with the National Cancer Institute. They're going to build a whole new set of buildings on their campus up there. They signed another memorandum of understanding with the Korean University. There's a lot of collaboration going on. As you may know, I'm not sure if they bought, but they have a very close partnership with Suburban Hospital. That's going to be happening. So a lot of excitement over that kind of engagement. We met with the head of NIH on Friday, who's talked about working with FDA in terms of supporting better collaboration in terms of accessibility and land use, kinds of supportive activities on both campuses and adjacent to them. That's going to be a big boost for the eastern part of the county. So I see a lot of great conversations occurring. Are they all going to, you know, be implemented, you know, tomorrow? No. But it's like there's a new game in town in terms of positive improvements that are going to help everybody prosper and I think allow us to address the community concerns we've been working on for so long. So those things are moving, and that's very exciting.
Thanks.
Questionnaire.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it brief. Ask something you started to talk about and then didn't have a chance, no one else asked about it, so I'll ask about it. My ward is a very, is a ward that depends a lot on public transportation and was very concerned about the ride-on.
Yeah.
The possibility of ride-on cuts. There are a number of, I'm not the only area in the county that's transit-dependent, public transit-dependent. And I just want to urge you that while nobody likes to pay more for such things as buses, service cuts are just, boy, that's a killer.
Yeah.
You know, people have to get to their jobs. They don't have cars in this part of the county. They need to pick up their kids at daycare. They depend on these buses to do things that just there's really no other way to do. And, you know, service cuts are just, they've just become impossible. So I really strongly urge you to continue that struggle to preserve as much as possible the bus service and other transit things that are coming down the pike as well. But the most immediate one, of course, is preserving what we have.
Yeah. Well, we'll do our very best. We did approve an increase in fares, and there'll be another one coming along. But as we piggyback, we basically follow Metro. Most folks may not appreciate the fact that we, as a government, subsidize about 85% of ride-on operations. They collect very little at the front. It's a very expensive proposition. It's not, you know, bus service is very expensive. The other thing we're struggling with is, on a related side, is of transportation funding is, you know, you pay at the pump a gas tax that goes into the State Highway User Fund. Well, that has become the way that the state is funding its own budget. It's removing most of the money from the Highway User Fund. So you probably go to...
Where do we know?
Ninety-five, less than 95% of Highway User Revenue.
As did we.
Yeah. This is a problem.
It's kind of eye-opening.
And I hope you will join me. We should have, we should have talked to representatives in Annapolis about getting going a constitutional amendment, I'd like to see, that says you cannot take transportation money to fund any other thing in the government. It's always the well they go to, and transportation funding is a huge, huge problem for us collectively. I understand, if I were governor, I would look at every resource to, you know, he's looking at feeding the poor, dealing with health issues statewide, all kinds of things. Education funding, absolutely. But basic infrastructure needs like this lose out, and we struggle locally to make up the gap. And it's, you know, I say this all the time, it's not just a local or state problem, it's a national problem. So, yeah, you're right, absolutely. But it's costly, and we got a lot of competing priorities.
And it's precisely in that area that it's been interesting to watch the recent enhanced collaboration between Mako and MML, working in Annapolis, as we've all been put into the same boat about funding and what the priorities are and finding ourselves much more aligned with what we're trying to see happen in Annapolis.
Yeah. So, and that's a good thing. But everyone is having the same struggle. So I'm sympathetic, but that translates into real life, I mean, we are really collectively, county and where there are municipalities, you are, the ones really there where the, you know, your next-door neighbor can't get to work or whatever it is, we are where the rubber hits the road. For all those decisions made in Annapolis or downtown and the national level, they deal in academics. We deal in the real world. Which is why I think this is such a great job. Isn't it a great job?
Yes. And we thank you very much for coming, and this has been informative and, I hope, helpful to you and helpful to us. And we'll continue the conversation.
Please, please. And don't be shy, I know you're not. But the way is...
We've been called many things. I don't recall shy.
I brought some of my newsletters, just so you know what I'm about generally, and I would actually ask you to please, whatever, just as an individual, you can do it anonymously, weigh in as you see issues come around that are important to you, where, you know, you think we're doing the right thing, where you think we're really making a mistake, let us know, please. We won't trace you, but I really am very interested in making sure that the council gets the best advice from everyone in the county. And it doesn't matter who you are, of course it matters, so you want that.
And you won't trace us like the state police under the former governor.
No, we won't. What we want, everyone has a great idea, and we just need to hear them. So, thank you very much. Thank you for what you do. It's, you are what makes this a wonderful place.
Thanks. We'll take a short break.
Keep going, gee, yeah. So I'll leave these for you. And I'll leave you some of my business cards, too, because you don't have them. And I'll, I'll leave you some of my business cards too, because you don't have.
Uh-oh, danger. It's, Todd, it's, it's getting late and you're turning off the lights, danger.
That's hard to turn those off. We'll go back.
I was thinking of the rest of the audience.
So we're, let's see, we ended up with the denials, so the triangles weren't too many, the waivers. Come on now. Oh. This happened earlier. Good thing we practiced. Yes. All right. So these are all the trees that were gone this year. Other thing I talked about is the DAVE program, which is, regards an annual management plan with pruning on a given, a given schedule. And so this is, this is what we've done. Oh eight, no, not, that's not right. This line, run it up. That's what was pruned in oh eight. Oh nine, and it's not showing up. Oh, that's because it isn't turned on up there. I need to change these colors so you can see them. Okay. Lavender, is that what that is? Is what was bulk pruned in oh eight, block pruning. Then the blue was last year and the red is sort of 80% done now. The snow for Christmas sort of caught these guys right about this line, moving down, and these guys moving up. This is Excel. This side has basically been done by Arbor Care and Excel pruning has done this. And then, so what we've got left is these streets here in the middle. A large portion, and let me turn on the inventory information so that you can get a little look at that. I keep hitting the. Those are all the trees in the inventory. And there's, as you can see down here, you see a lot of red and up here you see a fair amount of lavender. And again, these trees are in the same green-to-red scale and that the reds, the green is sort of under 20-some inches. So the majority are right-of-way trees, are still fairly small. They won't get very big because most of them are limited planting zones. But a large part of the pruning that, the pruning crew does is actually of private trees that are out over the right-of-way, that are full of dead wood, that'll hurt somebody that's on our property and we'd be liable. So it's not just the trees, our trees that we're pruning. And I'm not really sure about the legality of that, but it's something that I'll be looking into. So it gets hidden under there. And that's, so we've got this a little bit here next year and then we're done in sort of four and a half years' worth of, worth of work. The recommended program was a five-year, four-to-five-year rotation, so I'm feeling fairly comfortable with that. Ward three is the only ward we've sort of done a checkup on the inventory and there's some issues with our property lines in the GIS data. In that, we're not always sure where the right-of-way is. When they processed the right-of-way sheets, what they did is they ran paper sheets, plants through rollers and the paper had been hanging for 20 years and then it goes through a roller this way, it could stretch this way, this way, it could stretch that way. So the data, the sheets here, the lines showing property boundaries can be 15 feet This dark area was actually taken off of an aerial photo where somebody actually sat and traced the asphalt down either side. So that is correct, but the property lines came off of scanned documents and one of the things that we're looking at doing is getting these parcels rectified so that they actually show what is the right-of-way rather than what might be the right-of-way. That would greatly help me in identifying what trees really are mine and what are the homeowners and whether the asphalt is on our property or somebody else's property. We have places like, apparently this lady owns part of the road. And that may be true, but we don't know. So we're looking at doing that and as part of, part of the sidewalk planning process, hope to get this data set up. Now, why, and why was I going there? Because in Ward three, we had sort of done verification of what was there and what was missing. And I mentioned in the, in the reports that there's, I think, 490-some trees and 66 trees missing. The lighter dot, the purple, is all the trees that are present and the lighter dots are the vacancies that were identified in the inventory. And some are correct and some are not correct because we don't know where the right-of-way is, so we don't know if we have room for a tree and whether there is a vacancy or whether the road fills from curb to curb. And so there is no opportunity to plant on public land. That's, we need to know our right-of-way is better. That's one of the things we'll be doing. But, so the 66, 66 empty spaces down here. And then, actually, some of those, that was before this year's planting in some, some respects. So we turn off, that's the sites, these are the trees, and then somewhere in here, I have oh nine planted. Those are the trees we planted this year, 125 of them, along, 62 along Poplar. And some that you don't see in here, I put in a couple along Park, a couple more down around the city. This section was a spring planting and this section was a fall planting. And over here are the cherries along that section in Garland. So 125 city trees planted and however many bulked by 60-something, the discount tree planning program that we have where $200 to have a tree planted, it's sort of worth $3.50 if you individually contracted for it.
Are those on, do you have those in the map anywhere? Do we know where, where the, I know you don't know probably.
You know, I do. I do on a layer, but I'm not, I think it was on a server that I can't get to now, but I could send you a map. It's pretty well spread around the city, interestingly. So, you know, when I, when I turn back, turn the purple on, you can see we tend to have, to me, it's a lot easier, for example, next year, this is a good section for planting because then when I go to water them, I start at one end of the block, I go around two blocks and I'm done. And then when they need pruning in three years for structure, I go out and I do that block rather than doing these two over here, then these two, and then these two, which would just get lost in the forest. So that's one reason I try and do streets at a time, just makes it a lot simpler to Another layer I have on here is the enforcement issue. I'm not sure whether you've all had actually time to, to review my whole report. There's a, when I was doing drive-bys for a couple of inspections. The code is, I think, is, there's 31 subsections in Chapter 12, listing violations that I'm sort of the major enforcer of. And so I really don't have time to enforce all those. And one way that I thought might bring that out is I, during two psych visits to do reviews, I, an hour and a half in the car, just made a list of things that I saw that at least deserved a letter saying you need to deal with this. English ivy, kudzu, a couple of hazardous trees, a couple of trees removed without a permit, some construction projects that were done without any notification or involvement that should have had tree protection plans and didn't. And then, you know, you can see sort of, I was coming over here to look at a removal permit and I guess I must have been going over here to look at a, at a permit. Let me turn off the boundaries. Whatever, the colors aren't working very well. Let me turn them all to black so that you can see. The 1212050 is, that's removal without a permit. Then the bamboo, which is, I'm responsible for enforcing the bamboos coming out of one person's yard into another. Supposedly I get, go shake this person and say, hey, you can't let your bamboo go in their yard. But the process for enforcing that, if they don't want to do anything about it, relates to the timeline for citations, which was included in your pack, which can be 20, 30 hours for every violation. So if I write somebody a letter saying you have to remove your bamboo and they don't do it, and then I write them a citation and they don't do it, we're in court, back and forth, prepping, and I'm spending 30 hours trying to get somebody to control their bamboo. And that's commitment that I still have to then go out and be processing my permits. In an hour and a half, I found 30 violations that, you know, if, if everybody agrees, yeah, it's only 40 hours' worth of work. But if one person disagrees, all of a sudden, 48. Two disagree, it's 56. And all of a sudden, I've committed three months to getting 30 people to take the ivy off their tree or the bamboo out of their yard. And that's, I don't know how you all, with this complex set of regulations, feel about the enforcement. And it's a discussion that I think needs to be had. Probably not tonight, but something I'd like you all to think about, figure out how do, how does the city enforce this complex, or not complex, because it's not, it's pretty simple, but, but this minute level of infraction, when every infraction can take so much time. You can sort of see the dots and, and they're, they're pretty easy. Most of them are just bamboo and if, or are English ivy, actually. And if I tell somebody to cut the ivy, sometimes they do it and sometimes I go and do it, but then that's not really a good idea in some respects. Then the other thing, and, you all have copies of these documents. Just for fun, this was going to be my quick and dirty presentation. This is a free software, all of you, this is ArcGIS free software. You can download it and you can use all the city software on your home computer. I created a sort of five slides. This is all the applications that I received. I think these were the denials. These were the waivers, because they were already dead. These were the permits where people had to pay, so that's in the ATM. I think these are all lemons and the hoods are up, so these were the undesirable species. And I'm not sure what the tanks were. Oh, those were tree protection, that's what it was. So that was the Army working to protect the trees.
I was thinking it was enforcement.
No, I did not write that many citations, but you're right, that could have been. So this, you know, this is ArcGIS. It's a free software program that uses the data that I've used for everywhere else. You can just copy in the layers and play with it. Steve Davies was trying to do some stormwater stuff for the environmental planning committee. To go along with the enforcement is, is sort of my view of the fact, the tree protection plan is actually sort of becoming a public safety issue, to my way of thinking. This is in a backyard of a house along Ethan Allen, down near Elm. If you look here, you see this little brick sidewalk that went by this tree, it was probably 35, 40 years ago it was put in by the homeowner. And one day last spring, I got a call and I went out and looked at that tree and, if I can find out, and it had just fallen over in the middle of a rainstorm. Oh, six or eight. This is what it caused. I talk to this picture six or eight because I can't remember whether the kid was six and the branch was eight inches or the kid was eight and the branch was, branch was six inches in diameter. But sitting on a bed in that room was a child playing on his Game Boy and an eight-inch branch came through the roof into the room because somebody 35 years ago put in a sidewalk and damaged the roots on that white oak. That's public safety. That, to me, is why enforcing the tree protection ordinance is worthwhile. We're spending time on. And frustrating to me when I have a hard time getting to it.
And do you think that, that it was possible to tell that beforehand? Because my understanding was that you couldn't tell.
No, you can't. Well, sometimes fungi, fruit, you get mushrooms and you can, you can identify that you have rotting roots and you can then test the roots using various methods to find out how much is there and make the decision that it's a hazardous tree and require it to be removed. But again, even that takes writing a warning letter and doing a citation, et cetera, et cetera. There are hazardous trees around town that need, need to come down. And so, you know, where do I spend my time? And when they get really dangerous, I, you know, I try and scare the people because it's a lot easier to do that, scare the owners, a lot easier to do that than take them through the courts, make somebody aware of their liability. You can, to some degree, and that's why a lot of the waivers are issued, because I get out and, yeah, it's unkey. Or there's a artist con, which is a butt rot that's easy to identify. And you can sort of, you can do some, drill some holes or use an echolocation or tree stump radar, there's all sorts of things you can do to determine. I'll be going to a class in June, a three-day class. I'll be going to a class in June, a three-day class, become a certified hazard tree evaluator. But I, I think that's why tree protection plan enforcement is important. Game Boy is not something you want to be doing when a branch comes through the roof.
Lucas is eight. I said Lucas is eight.
He's eight, so it was a six-inch branch?
Well, no, the branch, the tree that came through the house was huge.
Came in the roof?
Yeah, it was, it was huge. It was like, it was about three feet from him, could have impaled him, but it didn't.
Yeah, that's, I didn't, I didn't see it come off, but I saw the tar on the roof. And that's, that's the closest we've come. You know, the tree in, in Ziegler Gardens came down. Root rot, two weeks ago, no, more than that, maybe a month ago, 36-inch white oak came out from between two houses on Tacoma, 100, I don't know, 65 feet at least, maybe 75 feet long, came out from between the houses all the way up into the middle of the road, took down a power pole and lines with no warning, just because it had reached a point where all there was that was holding it was one six-inch branch. And that was enough to keep the foliage alive, but there was no structure left. So it was a baseball bat balanced, and the wind happened to take it towards the road instead of left or right, which would have put it down the middle of the house. So we're, we're lucky, since I've been here, nobody's been hurt.
There was also the tree that fell against the house on Elson Street in Hillwood Manor. I saw it back in November, I guess it was. Huge, not the whole tree, but a very large limb.
Yeah, yeah, limb, yeah, but so limbs are one thing. They, yeah, they can hurt, so it's, it's not like the big ones where the whole tree just gets going.
Right.
And, and, I mean, that's sort of where the median size of 22 inches for the waivers gets really important. Those are dead trees. And the average dead tree is 22 inches. That's 60 feet tall. And if that gets up some momentum and hits a roof, it's going right through the roof. A branch breaks off a tree, a branch breaks off a tree. We've lost lots of trees during the snow.
Yeah.
I think that's my way through the report.
Okay. That was interesting and helpful, and you've given us some things to think about.
Yeah, if you want me to come back and talk about it, I'll be glad to do that future meeting.
Just, I think, if you, when you do come back, I think it'd be good to have like a set of recommendations about what you think we should do, or what the options are to do, to do. You know, you don't have to tell us now, but when you come back, I think it helps us as a starting point for discussion.
Okay.
All right. Then, we leave this on, we're going to go to sidewalk.
And it looks like there's still a question too.
Yeah, sorry.
Have discussion.
Yep.
Where I live, over on Wildwood Drive, down near the Baptist Church, the canopy there is extraordinarily mature from Kingwood down to, all the way down to the bottom of the hill there, the, I mean, bottom of Glen Side, New Hampshire. Kind of mature forest there. And as you go north of Kingwood, up Wildwood, Glen Side Drive, the canopy is much younger. And what I've noticed is that, what you were saying is that you got these large trees, really, really huge things, and there isn't anything in between.
Right.
You just got the big ones and you got some younger trees, some, you know, things that are maybe flowering, but are never going to get very large. And, and no one's planting the oak trees, or the big maples, or the big whatevers, on private property that is ever going to replace that canopy. And it, and my, this is sort of a rhetorical question, really, because you don't have the answer for it, is how do we get our property owners, not just to take care of the trees that they have, because Lord knows, I mean, I worship mine and I try to take care of them, but, but to, but to be thinking in terms of planting tomorrow's canopy?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, how do you incentivize people?
That, that part is a both buy. If people are aware, in the, twice a year, it's in the March 1st and it'll be in the April newsletter, you can buy a tree for 200 bucks that would cost you 350. How can you talk somebody into spending that, $250 or $200? I don't know.
That's why I say it's a rhetorical question.
That's what, part of the replacement? If somebody's getting a permit to take a tree down, they have to replace it or pay? And, you know, we may end up being a city with great right-of-way trees and not many trees.
That's what I'm worried about.
In the yards. This report, it's hard to get out and tell people that they need to spend money. You know, know that as well as I do. I'm not sure that Tacoma Park is as green as it used to be in that respect. Sponsor contest?
Yeah, I just know that there's a big correlation between a mature canopy and property values.
Yeah, and there's actually not even a, doesn't even have to be a mature, there's a direct correlation between mature canopy and energy costs. 15% savings. There is also a, I don't know, a, I'm looking for a copy of the full article, but even just a single tree in the front yard can raise property value $10,000 through curb appeal. And that's a right-of-way tree. So if you have a right-of-way tree, an ornamental tree and an oak, you're sort of up 22 to 25 now. And education of that, you know, we do an article every now and then, but is it in the paper that they back over on their way out the driveway? Or is it something that they read and make a connection to? I think that almost has to be one-on-one communications.
Thank you.
Councilor McCoy, and then Councilor Stevens.
Couple things. One is about a request that I think we've made a couple times about being able to replace trees before they have to be taken down.
All right.
And I still haven't seen a change to the ordinance come out for that, but I thought there was pretty wide support on the council for changing the rules so that someone could pre-plant their replacement tree, essentially.
Yeah, it's just really problematic. You know, how long do you give them? How far in advance? What reason, you know, for mulberry? Sure, because they can do that anytime. But judging that a tree is in great enough decline that I'll give them a permit in five years?
I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the point, that you have to guarantee that they'll get a permit later. I just think that they should get credit for planting the tree.
If they want to take one down later?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, as long as I'm not guaranteeing a permit.
No, I don't think we ever talked about guaranteeing the permit.
Probably.
For people who-
Just being able to use the credit-
Yeah, people who were planting it, they could get credit for planting the replacement tree.
I've always sort of had it connected to a permit at a later date, and-
I'm eventually going to get a permit for the tree that's dying in my front yard.
Right.
I've already, they, two of them were planted at the same time, one of them's already gone. And the one that I have now, it's, it's looking a little better this year, but, you know, I watch it from year to year so that I don't have the Lucas experience. But, you know, I, I know that it's, it's in the, it's in the five-year zone. I'd like to plant a tree to, to replace it in the, in the undergrowth, but I don't want to have to then take it down and pay another $600 later, because I like to plant more mature trees when I, when I plant them. So, and a lot of people, I think, would like that. So I think we're just talking about being able to get credit for, for that. And then the other thing is that I know that there was, there was an issue in my ward that brought up some concerns about the authorities of the, of the arborist in code enforcement actions. And I think that that should come to the council for some discussion at some point. And I would like to see that discussion tied also to a discussion about how best to support code enforcement activities of, of the arborist. I personally have suggested before that we have, that we separate out the code enforcement activities of the arborist from the, from the scientific and, and the supportive-
And have code enforcement and have arborist.
Yeah, have an arborist that's not doing the code enforcement. So you have somebody who can encourage people to plant more trees and give them their advice, you know, technical advice about the trees and professional advice about the trees without also being the person who comes out and writes the tickets for everybody. And we've talked about that, I think, three years ago was the first time we, we talked about it, because I brought it up then. I, I think it's worth discussing again.
I've heard that previous to Todd One, the arborist didn't write citations. But I, you know, but that's not something that I'm sure of. Todd One being, not Blackledge, that's another Todd, but he was here in 2001. No, Todd Nelson, right. And that he was the first one that was going, going to be made responsible for writing citations. So I don't know what caused that change at that point. But prior to that, Marty and Mark were advisors and permit creators rather than enforcement personnel.
So I, anyway, I think that would be worth, worth talking about. And, and, yeah, we had, we had someone in Ward Two who challenged the idea that the arborist could even come onto the property. And so, without saying too much about it, I think it's, you know, it's, I think the city attorney's office learned some things in that. And it was, it was interesting, it was an interesting situation, I think, that we should get a chance to, to talk about it. And I think it might fit well into a conversation about how to be more encouraging of getting people to plant trees. I sometimes wonder about the ways that our tree ordinance in fact discourages people from planting trees.
Many people think it is a disinducement.
I know people who will cut down a tree when it gets to the, to the size, because they're afraid that it might grow too big, or they may not like where it, and they might not have another chance to cut it down, so they'd better cut it down now before it gets to whatever the seven-inch-
And the answer to that is advising the right tree in the right place is really the answer.
Yes, thank you. I don't have any questions, just had a couple suggestions I wanted to make. One is that, you know, for the tree planting and, you know, where the city assists in buying the trees, I think rather than just reporting in the, in the newsletter a couple times a year, I'd like to see it written by somebody, written in a passionate way, you know, to advise any people, not only with the facts, but also with the, the importance of it. I don't know, I'm saying that you're not writing with passion, but I, I think, I think it needs to be sold, the idea, and I, and I use that in a nice way.
Right.
Nice sense of the word. And I also think that one of the problems that we have is that, you know, we've gone through several years now of talking about the senior canopy and the dangers. And we've talked so much about dangerous trees that I'm afraid some people misinterpret that and think that, you know, a tree, any tree near their house is a danger. And so I, I just mention that to keep it in mind, that we're always careful to explain why a tree is dangerous, and then not, not all trees are dangerous.
Most of my denials are written to people that any tree that's taller than they are is dangerous. But that's where most of those denials come from, and it's a-
Right, and, and that's why I think it's important to educate the public through the, through the articles and, and talking about not only the values of the trees, but also the overcomes, you know, help them to overcome some of the fears of the trees. And I see it among my neighbors, and I know it's an issue. It's, it's part of the problem with getting people to plant trees, right, in this, in this community. And then lastly, I'll say the, in answer to the question you said you wanted to talk about later with invasives, I, I really think that the, the only way we can address that is heavily dependent on writing and sales and convincing the public of the problems that those plants cause for the community and for the environment. And it isn't something we can enforce our way out of. So, you know, the amount of time, the amount of people and the amount of impact you can have is far greater spending your time on convincing people through news articles, snapshots, shows, and things like that. With, you know, always having the, the stick is always important, but it isn't the way that you're going to, you need voluntary compliance.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a long subject, and I realize.
15 years, and it's, that I've been working on invasives. And it's, it's a real hard sell unless somebody really cares that Sligo Creek being native It's a real hard sell. The damage, I mean, it's, it's a public safety issue in that-
But it's also a damage to environments even more local than Sligo Creek.
The, I mean, the, there was a tree on Columbia that fell yesterday or Friday. Tree fell down behind a firehouse.
Right.
No snow, covered in English ivy. That's what gets people to take the ivy off, is that it, the trees self-engineer, and then they get buried in ivy, and they can't hold themselves and the ivy up in a rainstorm. So they come down. That, that gives people-
So I think, so I think a news report about that type of incident is an important educational tool for the community, for those other people who have ivy on their trees.
And, and, you know, they're, they're done a few times a year in various, in various papers. And I do it every time I knock on somebody's door.
Right. But I think education masses is more important than, you have, your time is better used with the education.
Okay, thanks. We'll move to the next item. Hesitate to say last.
Good evening, council. For the record, my name's Alana Blanchard, I'm the staff person with Housing and Community Development, and I'm bringing for your consideration a resolution regarding prioritization of sidewalks and ADA improvements in the city. As you know, the city does have funding both for implementation of sidewalks on streets that do not have sidewalks through the Saferest to School Program, as well as pedestrian safety improvements through the Speed Camera Funds. Some of those, we, I'm sorry, I forgot one, and we also have funds for ADA improvements. And some of these funds do have deadlines, which is one of the reasons that we're, we've brought this project to you, like this, the resolution to you for consideration to- this project to you, like the resolution to you for consideration tonight. And then it will be brought back to you on March 8th. And at that time, we'll also be bringing a resolution regarding contracts for engineering services in order to assist the city in appropriately implementing sidewalk and ADA improvements. So, so to recap, tonight, we're talking about the adoption of the proposed priority ranking system. And then we will be bringing forward a contract, an open-ended contract for engineering services for the development of identified projects. And then in the past, we've also talked about low-impact design features in the plant construction, and so that will also be carried forward by using the engineer, the engineering contracts in order to appropriately use the right techniques in the right location depending upon the environment. So, I know in the past, you've looked at the priority ranking, the ranking, the priority ranking criteria, and I can refresh your memory if you'd like regarding those criteria. Those criteria are based on a number of factors. They're mainly to make sure that, first of all, that we're able to spend the money in the right place and in an efficient manner. So, for example, this year, one of our biggest criteria is that we're able to implement the funds and spend it in the right place, but in a timely fashion because some of our funds will expire. So, a very important criteria, because it takes so long to get right-of-way, is that there is available right-of-way. Unfortunately, many of the, this is unfortunate, but many of the neighborhoods that have few sidewalks were also plotted at a time when approving authorities thought it was very good to have very wide streets. So those streets do happen to have, some of them do have very wide right-of-ways. So that does mean that we do have some streets that are both needing sidewalks and means that it would be fairly, there are few barriers to going forward because the city does have sight control of those particular streets. Another criteria is that there are no existing streets, I'm sorry, that whether or not there are existing sidewalks. That criteria may become less important when you're closer to a school, for example, or some other pedestrian generator that would make sidewalks on both sides of the street more important. Not, not, I don't have a graphic for you, but obviously ADA improvements will also be part of this, and priorities for ADA improvements include factors such as close to pedestrian generators, so that would be commercial areas, connections to bus stops, and close to schools and libraries and so forth. If you turn to the, if no one has any questions on the resolution, I'll turn to the graphic. So the graphic, which shows all existing sidewalks in green, and then you can see the streets that don't have sidewalks because they're gray. And then all of the orange lines show recommended installation projects. This is not a list that's set in stone. What this serves as is guidance of priority projects that we can start evaluating and hit the ground running once we have engineering staff on board. Or not staff, but an engineering contract that we're able to go out and make sure that these are sites that have appropriate right-of-way, don't, you know, have obstacles that we can work around, don't have tree issues, and so forth. This doesn't mean that this is the only sidewalk that will be considered. For example, we, there is a petition, there was a petition for a sidewalk on Conway, I want to say, on Prince George's, between Conway and Circle. And so that, and it is, it does meet many of the criteria. It connects two sidewalks. It's, you know, on a route to, to a, both could be considered a route to school since everything in Tacoma Park is a route to school. But it's also considered, you know, close to a bus stop and so forth. So, so there certainly, I think you've all had experience with public works and construction, and there certainly have been very accommodating and flexible in terms of timing and so forth on projects. So, this is not, it's not the end, it doesn't mean that what you see here is what exactly is going to get constructed. There's still some flexibility. One of the things that you'll notice about this is that it, for example, it shows direct paths that cut through neighborhoods so that it gives people a safe way to walk places, specifically to schools, or trails that may take you to schools. And that's something that, when you look at the tier one, there may be four segments that are in tier one and one segment that's in a different tier. And so that's where the flexibility comes in, where we say, well, we're going to evaluate that one, that one section in there also because it makes sense to create a path that connects everything. There's also several small segments that aren't close to anything. Those happen to be very close to pedestrian generators, such as schools. And that's why they're, so for example, Hilltop, Sherman, Lee, and including one on this property, the space behind the city building where the parking lot is, and I know that many people have asked for that for a long time, to provide a more, a sidewalk that looks like a sidewalk for people to traverse the parking lot. So, so the resolution is right before the map. And I think at this time, we'd like to know if you have any changes, questions?
The first thing I just wanted to bring up on the map, how difficult would it be to add state highway sidewalks onto here? I started to draw them in myself and realized that there's parts of Carroll out in Ward six that I, Ward two, that I know don't have sidewalks, so I didn't want to just color the, and same with Pine Branch, that, you know, they're not continuous, and same with Ethan Allen. And so, it, in some cases, I think it kind of, that whether there's a gap there or not helps the map make sense. I think having it graphically like this makes it a lot easier to understand, and it really was helpful, but that was the main lack that I saw. And then I had one other quick question, which may or may not need to be addressed, but the thought that I had was that when you look up in the top of the map there in Ward six, where Lochne, it looks like there's a proposal to bring a little stub in from Merrimack and then the other streets after you get past Anne, and that makes sense, but I wondered about connecting it either from Lochne or whatever, or Hammond or whatever the other ones are to kind of connect those pieces that aren't connected. Councilmember Clay?
Yeah, I think that the map makes it a lot easier. Lincoln Avenue. Lincoln Avenue is not a top-tier street. I thought that it was on along, but I see that Boyd is there all the way through. And Boyd connects to the park that's up there that's just been redone, which is very nice. It does also run more parallel to Ethan Allen, so if someone wanted to get off of Ethan Allen, which isn't my favorite place to walk, you know, you could walk along Boyd, choose to do that, get up there. But Lincoln Avenue, in between Jackson and Larch, is pretty well-traveled, and it's much more of a cut-through than Boyd, and so, and it has parking on both sides. And the hills go up and down, so you don't have a lot of visibility from cars when they're coming over. It might be because it's too, maybe it didn't make it up there because it's too expensive, there's too many obstructions, but I'd appreciate it if you would.
We can certainly look and compare between those two routes, which has the least issues.
Well, Boyd goes to the park, so I mean, I like, I understand that choice from that And the bus goes at Boyd for the most part, comes along Lincoln, but it drops the people off on Boyd. Then the other thing is that Lincoln connects directly across Carroll Avenue. However, I always discourage my kids from crossing there because it's right at that crazy thing. I tell them to go up to Boyd and essentially cross in the middle of the street and wait until the trees, until the cars are clear, because eventually the cars will clear there and they can cross safely and they can see in both directions. So I'm a little, I'm torn about that. But Lincoln gets so much traffic that I think it's worth looking at. And then Auburn and Devonshire also connect through the neighborhood out. You can connect it, you can connect at Larch across, but Devonshire and Auburn are closer to the commercial districts. And I think they're relatively flat. They don't have, they don't have hills going up on each side. And I've heard from both of those over the last few years that they, they're interested in traffic calming, they're interested in sidewalks to protect their kids. I know that there was a child that was killed on, I can't remember if it was Devonshire or Auburn, many years ago, long before I moved here, but the neighbors have not forgotten. And the last comment that I wanted to make is that this is on a state highway and it's not, it's not one of our roads, but as you come around the corner from where East West Highway and New Hampshire are at, and there's the place where all the rats hang out, as you come around that sidewalk, I knew you'd know where I was talking about if I said that, as you come around that sidewalk there, it cuts off into curbs. And in fact, the curbs are really deteriorated. And so, if you're not somebody who can go up and down over that if you're in an electric wheelchair, you can go across to the opposite side of the street, but then you have to come back across to Elm and Ethan Allen, which is taking your life into your hand every time you do that. So I don't know if there's any way we could put two curb cuts in there, so it would be an ADA kind of a connection there? And it's?
It's 6900 New Hampshire?
No, it would be on Ethan Allen, where the townhouses are.
Yeah.
So there's the Chinese restaurant, and then there's the townhouses, and then there's the, is that the 600 block of?
I'm not sure, but, okay.
But you know what I'm talking about?
Towards Elm.
Yeah, where those townhouses are at.
Okay.
Right on the backside of the Chinese restaurant.
Yes.
Yeah, on, it's on Ethan Allen. And it's on the side that backs up to Devonshire and Elm and that, that side of the neighborhood that I live on.
Okay.
But anyway, so there's sidewalk there. It's not the world's greatest sidewalk, but if you have an electric wheelchair, you can get over it. But yeah, then you come up to these curbs and they just drop off and there's no way to get over them. So I don't know if we could add those, add an awful lot of accessibility.
Is that in the, is that in the block that's the commercial part of Ethan Allen? That you're?
It's the driveway to the commercial part.
Okay.
Yeah, you can get across the driveway, I think.
Yeah, and in the current CIP for FY10, and I think you'll be considering it for FY11, is a proposal for funding for a concept plan for Ethan Allen through East West. So I think it started out on East West, and especially because of the ADA issues, in FY11, it's expanded to include Ethan Allen, so that Ethan Allen and East West are addressed as one street.
Okay. This would be right in front of the townhouses?
Yeah.
And I think it's just two curb cuts, so.
I think all the curb cuts along that area, except for where they did the bus stop improvements, are not ADA accessible, and also across the street, the whole.
Even when, sometimes when they don't meet the ADA accessible requirement, you could still get over them in a wheelchair, but you can't get over the curb. So, I just think if we could add it in, in spite of whatever, you know, the CIP thing, if they're going to consider looking at it in 2011, I mean, when are we talking about adding curb cuts? So, I'd just take a look at it. Maybe it's no, but I'd like you to go look at it.
The next stands I saw were right straight down this side, so councilmember Seaver.
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank you for staying with us at this late hour. I think this is maybe the third time we've discussed this prioritization. And I know that the previous two times, I've expressed concern about the, the system does not include, did not include a nursery on Geneva Avenue that generates a lot of what I would consider to be high-priority pedestrian traffic. Every day, when weather permits, I see at least a dozen toddlers walking or being pushed in strollers up Geneva Avenue and then on up Ritchie Avenue. And I think not having any sidewalks on Geneva Avenue is a particular danger because of that. And I'm concerned that in the past, that type of institution, the nursery, was not included in the prioritization scheme. Has that been changed?
This project looked at schools that were included in the Safe Routes to School project, in the Safe Routes to School program. So any schools that were within the Safe Routes to School program were included. And regarding Geneva, and I think also, Pinecrest, I know is a neighborhood that is also entrusted in sidewalks. And I think both Geneva, Ritchie, Pinecrest neighborhood, each of those neighborhoods has severe issues with right-of-way. And so I think if a project were to move forward in those neighborhoods, it would require considerable neighborhood organization in order to ensure that either people were willing to give up parking, or willing to give up yard space, or move fences. And so I think, and so not to say that those are impossible projects, just that they would take a longer timeline in order, and possibly more funding in order to move forward. But mainly, it's the neighborhood organization piece that needs to take place before those can be considered.
Okay, I think we have two different issues on the table tonight. One is support for the prioritization.
Right.
And I can't support the prioritization when it didn't include institutions such as the nursery, which does have a significant pedestrian traffic. As far as the question about whether or not it's easier or harder to put sidewalks on Geneva Avenue, it's purely speculation at this point that the property owners would not cooperate because there is not an easement. You know, we're talking about three property owners, not a whole lot of work there to try to gain permission to put that in. And I'm only talking about Hilltop from 111 Geni, not Hilltop, but Geneva Avenue from 111 Geneva to the corner of Ritchie Avenue, which would accommodate the toddlers who now have to either walk or be pushed in the street. Before just out of hand discounting that as an improbability, I would want to see us at least explore that, and I would certainly be willing to assist in that to see if we couldn't get the easements if in fact they are not the ones that we need. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Couple of things. One was, in the estimated cost of Phase One, it says 1.2 to 2.3 million. What's the timeframe, do we think, that we'd be able to complete Phase One? Are we talking, and I don't want the exact time, I mean, are we talking a year, five years? What's the kind of rough estimate?
My understanding, from our staff, is heading on to the outcome of tonight's discussion and how quickly we're able to begin engineering work, is we actually hope to have some projects done possibly by June 30th. I know the Safe Routes to School money, I believe, expires at the end of this fiscal year. I do think that all, given all the... I do think that all, given all the work that is contemplated in Phase One, it would continue into fiscal year 11. And then depending on how fast we move along, we might come back to the council with the further work plan in FY11, if that's feasible.
And that's all supported either by Speed Camera or Block Grant or other state, and this isn't any money from the general fund?
That's correct.
And then, have we talked at all about the process for engaging or informing the community? Like, is that already, is that already exists somewhere in the code? Or, just because I, I think that, like, Old Philadelphia's on here, right? So I haven't talked to any of those people at all about this. And I would imagine they might sort of be surprised because it doesn't really seem like it's a high need place. And then yards are, what they would perceive, whether it's a right of way or not, they would perceive as their yard. So like, what's the process for engaging, informing, and getting input from community members? And that's not to say, I don't think community people should, people who own a house should have veto right over a sidewalk. But usually explanation goes a long way towards diffusing issues.
But I, I think the first step is to evaluate whether or not there are other issues that would prevent a sidewalk from being placed there. So for example, if there is a specimen tree, that would make it feasible or not feasible. But then generally with sidewalk projects, and Alvin is here, so she can correct me. Generally, and what we've done in the past with Safe Roots to School projects is we wire the neighborhood, have a meeting, you know, make sure everyone understands what's going to happen. If there, especially if there are any issues, like we're going to be removing a tree. In the past, we'd remove trees and replace them. And so, and then you would really make sure that that particular property owner is spoken to so that, you know, everybody's on the same page about what's happening. And in some projects, there may be a lot of landscaping in the right of way. And you really want to give people some lead times so that they know what's happening and have time to prepare for it.
I think I would just add, I think there are certainly some segments on this map where I think there has been extensive community discussion. I would agree with the council member right that that has not always been the case. There are certainly very strong neighborhood associations in the community. There are also areas that are not covered. So I think what we've talked about internally as a staff, once we have a plan, is to really work with those council members who would have sidewalks potentially constructed in their areas and hopefully get your input in terms of what would be the best way to conduct outreach with the community.
The other comments I have, one, I would feel more comfortable if there was a whereas, sort of second to last, that says something like, whereas other sources of community input can be used to adjust the rankings periodically, or as, I don't want to say as makes sense. But I think that it's very focused on using the data and the, and this ranking. It doesn't say exclusively, but there aren't, there isn't any language in there about other sources of input, community input in.
After geographic area, community input?
Yeah, you could, you could do that also. So I just think, I don't know the exact language, and we don't need to words tonight for this later. And then just in terms of what's prioritized on my, in my ward. First, I would say the residents in my ward are fortunate because there are many sidewalks. So it, it's more a question of, again, Old Philadelphia seems like there might be more needy places in the city in terms of sidewalks. Councilmember Siemens mentioned one on Geneva. But I would even think on, you know, Valley View, for example, where, to me, there's a real danger when you're going along a sidewalk and then there's no sidewalk for three houses, and then there's another, then there's sidewalk, which is the case in Valley View, where the sidewalk all of a sudden stops and the person has to cross the street. Basically, when you're forcing people into traffic. You know, I would think that the money would be better spent, and I don't know the right of way issues in that little strip of Valley View. Might be a good place. Or on Holt, I think there's also a sidewalk gap. Or I notice Boston is a red line up here near Chicago, and I'm not sure if that's on the park side or the, because that's kind of a funny situation, where the park side doesn't have a sidewalk. And the house side actually has this gap of about 40 feet, where there's no, there's no sidewalk. There's just some houses that don't have a sidewalk. And again, it kind of forces people to walk into the road. The last area is that, it's a little confusing to me. There's streets here, Boundary, part of Alfred, Dundalk, half of Ray, that are city streets. And I can't, I'm pretty sure there's a sidewalk on Ray on our side, but it's not, because I remember campaigning, walking along there, it's not, it's just not designated. So I don't know if that's because it's, we've forgotten that it's a city street, or if there's actually not a sidewalk.
The street is not the city's, just a property. So we stopped at the property down the way on the south side.
So we're not responsible for?
The sidewalk for the street.
And that's true of Boundary also?
No, Boundary, the south side of Boundary is.
Okay, but it doesn't have a sidewalk, or I think it does have a sidewalk? Okay, and then what about Marguerite, Alfred, Dundalk? Half of those are basically ours, but the whole, but there's no, there's no sidewalk. I guess the only thing that would be, I think, helpful, then, I realize that Ray is not ours, but people's walking patterns kind of don't stop just at the city boundaries, right? So people who live over here might decide to walk just over Spring. So it might be nice to know, even if it's not, maybe it takes other colors, even if it's not ours, right next to us, like, you know, are there sidewalks or not? Because it might make sense to connect something where we should build a sidewalk which would connect to other sidewalks in, that are actually counties, or not, because there's not a sidewalk there, but it's just a little bit hard to tell. So thanks.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'll go back to something that Mayor Williams said, which is about the state roads, or are they state roads? We don't know. But I've had a, a petition was given to me by everyone on the Ethan Allen side of Manor Circle. I don't know if you're aware of this, I mentioned it the other night, but I haven't shared it with you. Between the Junction and Jackson, and every property owner along there, except for one, the one nearest to the B Y Morrison Park, signed saying they would like a sidewalk on the north side of Ethan Allen. Now, I don't, again, I don't know who owns the street. And, but, but that's, if you look at the map, you see that there aren't a lot of ways to get from Elm to the Junction if you're walking, except to go backtrack, go up to Boyd, take Boyd around, and then come back down of Carroll, let's say. The only other place is to take Elm and then come up Sycamore. And, and what I'm just really trying to say is that the people along Ethan Allen want a sidewalk between the Junction and Jackson. They signed a petition. I could go back to them and say, you know, right of way dictates that you give up part of your yard in order to get a sidewalk here. Are you willing to do that? And I'm willing to make that, to ask them that question. But I'd like to, to have some sense that if I got them all to sign, sign away part of their property, that there's a chance that the sidewalk would actually be installed. So I'm coming back to Bruce's point of, can we put the state, or are they state highways on the system? And then I need particular feedback into what it would take to get a sidewalk on Ethan Allen.
Okay.
If I can, if I can just ask a clarification. In terms of putting the sidewalk, showing the sidewalks on state highways, one of the things that I, I'm hearing is the need to visually see how things connect. But also, I think the purpose of the, of the map here was to show what we would be able to fund, which is a different kind of thing. And.
We could have a third, or fourth, or fifth.
Right, so we have some different kind of colors to show some of that, which would be very helpful, I think. In terms of the sidewalk along Ethan Allen, there is a discussion about what you do on a state highway that the state is not sure about. But whether or not the city would do the work, having an understanding among the property owners, if they would be willing to give up that land would go a long way with whichever jurisdiction it is that would be undertaking that work. And one of the bills that I will bring to your attention is one we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, which is encouraging state highway to put a higher ranking for doing sidewalks, even when they're not doing the work on the road.
All right, I'll pass that on to my constituents, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Schultz, and then Councilmember Snapper.
I want to, I guess I'm not clear just yet. We're looking, I understand that this is proposed as a Tier One, which receives red. What is the, in real time, the time differential between when Tier One sidewalks would be installed and say, the next tier be installed? Such that if you say to a constituent, well, we know you want a sidewalk here, but can't afford to do it just in Tier One, but we're going to be doing it in Tier Two. Are we talking about a 12 months lifetime, or 24 months, or is it uncertain? I don't know, is that, Oliver, is that your question?
Feel free to jump in, Alana. I would say that what is shown on this map, and a lot of you disagree, jump in, would probably take the remainder of this fiscal year and all, if not at least a good chunk of FY11.
Do you have projected revenues for?
And that would be my second point. You know, I, I think that's sort of the, the million dollar question.
Sorry.
Actually, it's on my, sent it, Yvonne to an email earlier tonight, saying we needed to sit down and look at the Speed Camera fund. So, you know, a lot of, we haven't had an easy time of trying to predict revenues, both because of the change in state law that went into effect October 1st. And obviously, there's work going along New Hampshire, you know, which impacts the number of tickets. So it's, truthfully, it's been sort of all over the place. I would say probably between what is proposed here and the ADA curb ramps that the council had previously committed to, which will happen this year. You're definitely looking at FY12, I think. We could probably give you some better numbers during the budget process.
Well, I understand. I mean, that's, that's a reasonable answer to a difficult question. Because FY11 is the remaining four months of FY11, plus 12 months of FY11. So in effect, you're saying, we're speculating, I guess is a better way of putting it. That a Tier Two wouldn't begin for at least 16 months, maybe longer.
And I think, I mean, as Alana noted on the, on the cover sheet, we have a fairly wide range in terms of what the cost of this is estimated to be. And certainly, I think some of that will become more known once we get into the engineering phase. And the bids. But if you forgot almost, you know, over a million dollar swing for just what you're seeing before you this evening, obviously, if we can do that work at the lower end of that scale, that would expedite future segments. If we're not able to do that, that obviously creates more time delays.
We're, we're doing the least expensive projects earlier because these are the ones with the least obstacles, the least trees, and the most right of way.
Okay, my next question. On Wildwood Drive, this fiscal year, I believe, two circles are going to be, traffic circles are going to be installed at Kirkland and Kingwood. So what, sort of, how will these sidewalks be engineered to accommodate the installation of those circles? Or will it be the sidewalks that are engineered? I mean, will it be the circles, well, the, the vice versa, what comes first?
Not that, is there, yes, right?
Not that far along. Once we get the engineering firm on board, that'll be a question that will be asked of them. It may be one of those projects where they recommend that we do it in tandem, rather than do it separately.
Because I, you know, like, I realize these are so-called mini-circles. But you might find that in engineering, you need to chisel away at the corners of the intersection in order to create the proper radiuses that you need. And you wouldn't want to be building sidewalks before you had all figured out. And I can see you've already thought of that. Okay. The other question as I have, you know, knowing Wildwood Drive like I do, and seeing which side the sidewalk is going to be on, where you have the right of way, and this is sort of a hypothetical question. I mean, on, on Wildwood, you have some, some nice, good-sized calip of trees right next to the curb. I don't know whether it's, that's private property or right of way, but probably right of way. But where you have the right of way, is it possible to wiggle the sidewalks? So that they kind of work around trees? They don't all have to be straight as an arrow?
Absolutely.
You know, exactly 38 inches from the curb?
And I don't know if you've noticed, but the city Tacoma Park does not balk at even wiggling out into the street around a tree. So it's been known to happen, and I'm sure it'll happen again. Or around telephone poles or other obstacles.
Right, okay. Will all sidewalks be built in terms of poured concrete? Or will they, in other cases, use other materials?
There may be other materials used, it, it depends on the circumstance.
Okay. All right, I'll wait till another time to kind of address specific segments.
Well, hopefully you'll be very involved in the process.
Hopefully.
There's one thing I probably should have mentioned in addressing Councilmember Schultz's question. And it is on the cover sheet, but I don't think we've talked about it. It's one of staff's recommendations, is that we do develop a transition plan to deal with the existing sidewalks that have ADA compliance issues. So I think as you talk to your constituents about the timing of other work, I did just want to remind the council that the city does have an obligation to deal with the ADA compliance issues associated with existing sidewalks. And what our understanding is, in talking to some community members who are very knowledgeable about ADA issues, is that it would behoove the city to at least have some sort of transition plan in place that at least can communicate what our direction is in terms of dealing with those issues at the same time while we're trying to address areas where there are not sidewalks currently.
Councilmember Snapper?
Thank you. This is great, I really appreciate all the work you put into this. And I have a specific block suggestion.
Sir?
Which I didn't, I, I should have told you sooner, but I wasn't, the map was really very helpful. And I, I didn't realize some stuff by just looking at the list. The concern I have is on Maple between Erie and Kennebec.
Where the sidewalk ends halfway down the street?
Yeah, there's a, yes. And the particular issue is that that side of the sidewalk, that side of the street is where a lot of kids would like to walk. And the way the families and so on who live on the block, and the way that kind of the traffic flows on Maple at that point, the sidewalk that you have on Kennebec, where you're adding a second sidewalk between Roanoke and Flower, there's far fewer people that need to walk on that side of the street that's missing the sidewalk than there is on the part of Maple between Erie and Kennebec. So the community would prefer the kind of, I'll call it half-block, because it's not quite a full block of sidewalk, on Maple to the piece that you have on Kennebec. And it has mostly to do with just how many people with kids are using those sidewalks, more than anything. Because the adults in those neighborhoods don't mind crossing at a stop sign to the other side of the street to use, you know, the existing sidewalk. I think, and the other, there's another little piece on Maple, which you penciled in, which I can. in, which I, this one I actually saw, but forgot to say anything about. Just up from where Maplewood comes in, there's a missing sidewalk on that side of the street. There's sidewalk on one side, but not the other. And the problem is when it's not really, I don't think it's a Tier One, because people walking down or up Maple, just past Maplewood, are going to walk on the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk side now, rather than stay on the other side where you're going to add a little piece. See what I'm saying? And the reason is because when you get to Maplewood, the sidewalk ends on Maple, so you'd have to cross the street anyway. So while the particular property owners would probably like a sidewalk there, or maybe not, it's a less, I think it's a, definitely a lower-tier little piece. Did you get which one I'm talking about?
Yeah, you're, you're talking about Erie to Kennebec should be Tier One, and then Erie to Maplewood should not be.
That's correct.
Okay.
Council?
I'll comment down.
Oh, councilmember Quine.
So councilmember Robinson mentioned that he has a petition for folks along Ethan Allen that goes all the way to Jackson, which means that part of those are actually Ward Two people and not Ward Three people. There's a series there that runs about half of that upper end of Manor Circle across all the way to the end where the church is. And I haven't seen the petitions, and none of my constituents have called me to talk to me about it, and they regularly call me to talk to me about various issues that you're familiar with there, if you'd sit anywhere next to the code enforcement officer. What I want to say is that with few exceptions, and Boyd from Jackson to Carroll seems to be exception, with few exceptions, Phase One of the sidewalk installation provides for a single sidewalk on each side of a street, and it's my perspective that I would rather put a single sidewalk on each side of streets of folks who want them. For example, a single sidewalk in Auburn or Devonshire, from, from my perspective for the ward overall, would be better than having a second sidewalk along Ethan Allen. Not that I'm opposed to having a sidewalk along there, but I don't know that I would put it into Phase One, because there is a sidewalk that runs on the opposite side of the street, and there's even a crosswalk with a stop sign at Jackson and Ethan Allen that's pretty easy to cross out. I cross back and forth there, I can send my 11-year-old and eight-year-old there to that crosswalk when I want them. I don't, I don't have them cross at Elm, ever. I say walk up Boyd till you get to Jackson, cross at the stop sign. So I feel like at this time, there, there is accessibility there, there is a sidewalk there, there is a way for people to get through there, and for those people who live along Manor Circle, Ethan Allen isn't their only way to exit. They can, they can exit out into Manor Circle, which already has a sidewalk, essentially, they have a sidewalk on the front side of their properties already, all through the ring. Probably the exception is the part that's actually in Ward Two and not in Ward Three, which backs up onto a little street there that I think is called Winchester, is that right? And they do not have a sidewalk, however, they are on a dead-end cul-de-sac. So I would not support moving this into the Phase One at this time, for all those reasons.
Councilmember Quine gets the last comment.
Just really quick, the issue of ADA reminded me that if we're going to be building all these sidewalks, it would be good to know where the sidewalks are that are really currently damaged and need to be replaced. I can think of one complaint on Tulip, kind of near where it hits, I think, where Park hits it, across from Park, and then I think there's also an issue on Crescent somewhere, but those are just two that I know of, so it might be good to have a sense of where those.
The ADA evaluation included sidewalks, sidewalks as well as curb ramps, so it both looked at where come out should be that are missing, and it's actually beyond both. It looked at all of, many factors, including where there should be curb ramps and there are no curb ramps, where there are curb ramps, and then it measured all of the curb ramps and looked at them to see the severity of their non-conformance or conformant, or whether or not they were conforming. So there's several different slopes that you measure, whether or not there's a detectable warning, and then whether or not it lines up with the curb the correct way. And then it also looked at sidewalks, so cracks, deterioration, with obstacles, even vegetation. So there are some things on there that we can correct fairly easily without a large expenditure of funds, but there are many other things where, which, like deterioration that really, and then there, if they're also ranked. So some of the ADA work may even include replacing sidewalks.
Great. So are people ready to go forward with this?
No.
Yes.
Not until it takes into account, not just using an arbitrary way of saying that this is school, but including all those institutions that do have a volume of foot traffic that's important to address.
I say, you know, I like the approach, I think it's the right approach, rather than having councilmembers deciding or, or community members deciding. I like having a regularized way of selecting locations for these improvements. I just think that, that there's at least one flaw in this, in this formula that we've talked about before, but it hasn't been addressed.
Well, and I think part of the ways that that can be addressed is through you letting us know, there's this section, please look at it. So now we'll go out and we'll look at it.
But again, I think it's a flaw with the formula, rather than a flaw with the approach. I think, I think what it does by, by opening up and saying that, well, we should, we should advocate for overriding the formula defeats the reason for having this prioritization.
Well, I guess, my quick thought on that is that if the criteria that was used was the Safe Roadways designated schools, there may be now, in the instance you've talked about, and there may be in the future, other places where daycare or nursery center opens up and there's not a way to identify that without somebody bringing it to staff's attention, so that there's, there are going to be things like that that aren't going to fit in a formula.
Well, that's why I say the formula, if it addressed not just the walkways to school, but also those other institutions that do have the high-quit traffic, would be the way to address it. And then you wouldn't have to battle every time these things came up, that when there was a new institution, it would fit into the prioritization plan.
But I think the, the point might be also that you don't always, all those daycare facilities aren't like formalized significant institutions that you would know are opening unless someone in the community told you, right? So this gets you close, and then this is why also I push for this community input line, it really makes a way for those things that don't get formally accounted for in there, because there's going to be those exceptions where there's going to be things that aren't in the formula, because maybe there's a, an in-home daycare that, look, it takes care of six people. I just think that it's hard to always include every single institution right to date.
I think we should be, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a hard, a hard thing to include, other than using the arbitrary criteria of the safe walkways to school.
It doesn't exactly seem like an arbitrary thing.
But it's not the only thing.
That was the funder for the program. This, this entire study was funded through a grant, through Safest to School, and, and that's how we obtained the funding, and that was their criteria. For example, this study, there are several things the study does not take into account because it's fairly narrowly defined. It doesn't include high schools. It's very specific for Safe Routes to School, defined criteria. We added in several other criteria that we felt met our, that met our construction schedule, that met our abilities as a city to actually implement sidewalks, and, and we also looked at other criteria, such as, do we really want to be spending public funds on areas where maybe only five people are walking? But there is that fine-grained criteria for private institutions that are not necessarily, you know, we don't have a database of nursery schools, so we don't know where all of the nursery schools are in the city. And, but when you bring that to our attention, we can then incorporate it into, into the database.
Yeah, I think, I think that's satisfactory. I don't see it as a, having to battle to get something in. I think staff has indicated a willingness to look at that and deal with it.
Well, I, I disagree with the prioritization not including that. I'll vote against it, but I certainly will advocate for my constituents, should this pass.
Thank you. We'll move on to our last item, which is a legislative update, and the deputy city manager's here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I, I plan to go through this relatively quickly and happy to answer any questions also that you have and follow-up at other times as well. I think I'd like to start actually on the three pages, the two pages behind the first page, which is a compilation of copies of statements of support that the city has submitted so far on bills. One is on supporting funding, state funding for microenterprises, which help small businesses, and we think would be particularly helpful in the New Hampshire Avenue corridor and some of our small business areas. One was simply saying that it's reasonable to use web-based notification in certain cases about open meetings. One has to do with the sidewalk construction in priority funding areas along state highways, and the importance of being able to have those have higher rankings when state highway is considering where to spend its money. And then the one on the back, I found relatively interesting, this had to do with the option, the, the option for when giving traffic citations, if you've received a traffic citation, simply paying it by mail without having to go to court. Right now, you have to go to court, the police officer has to show up, and it's a time-consuming thing. It's the only, Maryland is the only state in the Union where you can't just send in you're fined, you know you're guilty, with a traffic citation. And so this is a, a common sense approach to both save residents the hassle of having to go to court, and the police officers from having to go to court. I found it interesting that the estimate from our police department is that by passing this law, the city would save $23,000 a year in police overtime costs alone by not having to go to, show up at court. What happens is, somebody goes to court, hopes the police officer doesn't show, when they, if they see the police officer in the courtroom, they plead guilty, which means it's a waste of time for the police officer to come, or if the police officer doesn't come, then they might be able to get off. This does still allow for a person who's received a traffic citation to request going to court. Yes?
Why is this, says this, this bill will reduce the widespread practice of traffic defendants going to court? It doesn't say why it's going to reduce it.
For the, for that reason that I just mentioned, which is that many people go to court with the hope that the police officer will not show.
Why would this, why would this stop that, though?
This, because.
What happens that's different from the, going to court?
Right now, the, right now, the people have to go to court.
Right, but, but one doesn't follow from the other. Okay, so right now, they have to go, they have to go to court, and so there's no, which by the way, I didn't know this, oh my God, how stupid is that? Okay.
This is a misreading, this is, this is a misreading.
I'm misreading?
No, what?
Sorry.
This is like a speeding ticket, this is, this is like.
I got a speeding ticket from the state police.
Okay.
And on my way back from Ocean City, and I could, I either paid it online or I mailed it in. I didn't have to go to any court.
But if you want to plead not guilty, you have to show up in court, and people do that so, in hopes that the officer doesn't show up in court.
You want to pay and plead not guilty?
No.
Yeah, this is.
If you want to, if you want to contest the ticket, a lot of people.
I'll go back and double check, I'm sorry. I, I thought I understood, but I'm not, I will come back. In any event.
It would, it would save money because we wouldn't have to, you would have to request a court date with this, rather than, unless you do something else, you automatically get assigned a court date. Everybody does, therefore, the police officers have to show up, presuming that people will show who have given no intention that they're going to show.
Okay, but it's still not going to stop people going to court with hope that the police officer will not appear, unless there is some penalty for it, because it's the same as it would be before. So in, in some jurisdictions, if you choose to go to court and you lose, you pay the ticket and the court costs.
Yeah. I'm going to go, I'm going to go back and check, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's, I, it, this is.
I would suggest that whoever put this in here had a clearer mind than we do at 11:30, so I'll support it.
Well, and I do, and I would like to say that the, the police departments across the state strongly support this, and our police department did do the computation of, of the savings that it would be.
And until, I wasn't needed because they got more people and because I had higher priorities, I was going to testify in favor of this.
On the front of the package is a summary of public hearings that are coming up for the next two weeks that I felt you may have some interest in, and I'm going to go over a couple of things on here. There's a number of bills related to energy savings, how you get credits for energy savings. The first one on this, HB 701, which is tomorrow, is a, I think, a very good bill that simply says that if you are generating some electricity at your house or your property, that the credit that you get from the electric company for that is at retail cost and not a lower amount than, and within very strict amounts that is currently a practice. Right now, you.
So right now, it's, I thought it was right now at retail.
It's not uniformly applied like that, and so this would be a statewide bill, and it also takes away a lot of the time restrictions about when that gets credited. And so, and lots of delegates are behind this. It does seem some, a reasonable, kind of good consumer practice, and I know that there's been a complaint in the past of that. There's another bill which would limit any credit, I mean, a municipality would get to only getting the, using that credit on its own properties. I don't know that we wouldn't want to do that, I don't know that this is something to take a position on, but there does seem to be a number of different bills where, then they have a similar one for nonprofits now that they're putting in, which I, my guess is that there's some concern that somehow we're going to be helping somebody else out by crediting, by using some credits from energy that we might generate, like from our photovoltaics. that we might generate, like from our photovoltaics.
So, like some municipality is going to have so many photovoltaics that they pay their entire bill and then...
And have stuff up, or maybe they just give it to...
Sell it to somebody else.
They give it to someone else. And I don't, so, it'll be interesting to see. To me, I don't think those are going forward very strongly, as far as I can tell. But it's something that I think we have to be very careful about. We're still not sure exactly what we might do with the credits that we get from this There are, one bill, there's a couple bills that seem, in some respects, to be good bills, but cause us as a municipality a good amount of burden. One is state Senate Bill 775, Road Salt Management Programs. I know Jamie Raskin's one of the co-sponsors of this bill. And basically, it's a, in order to address concerns that salt might be damaging the environment, and that using best practices in how we manage salt would be, is a good idea, we're supposed to have a proposed plan by May and have it approved and implemented by the state by October that shows that it's a good plan.
Of next year?
Yes.
Not in 2010?
No. I'm saying May 2011 and October 2011.
FYI, MML is opposing this bill.
Who is?
MML. Okay. Interesting.
If I recall correctly, unfunded mandate.
Yeah, I mean, it does require, it looks like it requires some work. Not necessarily, again, a bad idea to have that as a practice, but, you know, it is...
Does the bill have an estimate on the impact on cities?
I don't know yet. I haven't researched how much that would be. A similar one is under March 3, House Bill 705, Energy Performance Ratings, which is that we would go through a process, and it's an online form and process to evaluate every municipal building that we have and identify what its Energy Star rating is and have that posted.
And I can't find my notes, but I recall the discussion, because I was ready to speak in favor of that one, and I believe MML is also opposing that one.
I did look at the online form from a brief look. It doesn't look completely onerous, but we haven't gone through that, and Darryl wasn't even familiar with this particular process. So it's something that we would just need to investigate. You know, it's, it's just another step that we need to look at. Bruce, I left you a couple messages about stormwater management.
Yes.
And I'm thinking, MML can take care of stormwater management.
I was going to make a comment or two on that one. There are a lot of municipalities who have heartburn on this one, having to do with issues that would appear from my message from Darryl. I was going to talk about this one a little bit last week.
Yeah, I don't think, they're already pretty far along.
It sounds like they're probably not going to affect us. The thing that gave me a little pause was that the advice at the Legislative Committee was that municipalities who get their plan approved and in before the state legislature finishes its business mid-April are taking the chance that they will have an approved plan that they have to go by, and the state legislature has changed what it is, and then you'd have to go by your plan, not, it doesn't take into account what those changes are. They were advising holding off to submit until that window between Sunday and May 4, at least. And many of them were saying that they weren't going to submit by May 4.
We've already submitted, though, I think. We're close to doing that.
Well, and this is final approval, which we don't have because we haven't done first and second reading yet.
Okay.
So, my thought was that it probably didn't hurt to kind of hold, even if it's just our second reading, until that time period, so that we can still send it in and be timely, but it may happen, depending on what the legislature does, that we go, whoops.
There's a couple ones about civil marriage. There's the HB 1079, Maryland's Marriage Protection Act, restricting marriage to one man and one woman. Council's gone on record on that before, so I would send in a council resolution related to that. And then House Bills 1176 and 1279 are actually submitted by the same person, are very similar, basically saying that marriage is between two consenting adults. And so I would assume that we'd support that. I checked with Michelle and Ann, and they don't feel that anything's moving forward on that, but it is a good thing to send that message, to be consistent with what we've done in the past. On the top of the second page, Senate Bill 692 on condominiums. This is a bill that Jamie Raskin's pushing quite hard, and we've had some, we've got a couple little suggestions, although it may not actually mean changing the bill. It is a good bill, and the mayor has agreed to testify on Thursday.
What's it about? It's a good bill, he doesn't tell me anything about it.
Basically, part of it is the notice about, that you'll find out the purchase price at the time when you get your notice, that there's a condominium conversion. This is very similar to a bill that Sheila Hickson put forward two years ago, that also had a certain provision of the notice. This clarifies that notice. It still doesn't quite address the issue of the rumors that happen, that there's going to be a condominium conversion, and people start moving out first before they even find out what their rights are.
And I'll be testifying, assuming that it happens earlier in the afternoon rather than later, since I have to be downtown in a tux at 6:30.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll let Jamie know. Linda Walker is also available if we need to have her come. There's, on March 8, House Bill 1022 adds gender identity to the list of characteristics to be protected from discrimination in the state of Maryland. I don't think the council's taken a position on that, although I think I know what the sense of the positions have been, but I just wanted to let you know that that's, that that's a new bill that I don't, I don't think we've addressed. A few technical bills, the Clean Energy Loan Programs. I actually want to check out a little bit more information on House Bill 1014, House Bill 1085. Most of the bills that you get credits or whatever for having, saving energy, talk about kilowatts, this also adds BTUs as a way to categorize that energy. On March 10, we've been asked by the Department of Housing and Community Development to have someone speak on behalf of the Community Legacy and Neighborhood Business Works Program, and Fred Schultz has agreed to speak as part of the DHCD panel. And we've obviously benefited a lot in Tacoma Park from these programs. House Bill 1031 caught my eye. It's a, it's a bill that would require somebody associated with every public body in Maryland to take an online training about the Open Meetings Act.
More than one person. Somebody's.
Somebody's. Okay. It's written in an interesting way.
And within 30 days.
Right. That's fast. This is one of Heather Mizir's bills. She's got quite a few bills in kind of transparency and government and good government.
And if I can just point out on that one that it has the strangest sponsor line in the Assembly this year.
Yeah, she's got quite an unusual list.
There are two sponsors. Delegate O'Donnell, the Republican Minority Leader, and Delegate Mizir, the two opposite ends of the spectrum. And FYI, MML is opposing.
It is a really fast turnaround time, and it doesn't necessarily mean that people would understand the open meeting slot, but anyway. On March 11, there's High Performance Buildings Act, which would require building, occupied buildings, municipal, county buildings, state buildings, that receive state funds of $100,000 or more for construction or renovation to meet LEED Silver Standard. There are some waivers, but I wanted you to be aware of that. House Bill 1182 allows municipalities and other jurisdictions to establish business improvement districts. This is a fairly complex law, and I want to have that evaluated, but I saw that on the list today.
And is it the case that they can't, that a municipality can't establish a business improvement?
I think that, I think that's true. I think there's some, there's just some very strict provisions in which they can do that.
How do we get the CDAs?
That's, that's a very, that has a, CDMA's are specially designated within the state law, and so that's a special category. This is, this seems to be a different category of business improvement district.
I need to understand the distinction.
Yes, and like I said, I was looking through it. It looks complex. I'd like to get some advice on that.
And please don't ask me why, because I don't remember. It's all about how the committee votes. MML is opposing that bill.
Really? Okay. As I said, it was, it looked, it had a lot of text in there, and so it made me wonder what that was.
Nope, we're not opposing the Open Meetings Act bill.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just telling you what MML is doing.
That seems like a very negative reaction by MML, because it's not really going to cost anything. It's likely, it costs some time. It's likely that some people will learn about open meetings. And based on the training I went to at the first MML convention, where someone said, "I don't understand what the issue is. We just go into the back room and decide." I think it would be a better idea if more people went to training about the Open Meetings Act. So, it seems like a slightly negative reaction by MML.
If you'll note, I mean, I did not, I did not indicate that we would be taking a position on this unless somebody gives us some direction. Things are moving quickly.
And let me remind you that the MML positions are a result of the committee vote, and there's about 32 people on the committee.
Do they do it in the open?
Yes.
Just a question.
And there are a number, there were, there have been a number of times where my sense of what the group was going to do as a no-brainer wasn't what the group did.
Right. That might have something to do with it, that were no-brainer.
I have the information on the traffic citation bill.
Oh, good.
I'll share with you in a second. So, if you're going to testify, are you going to testify on behalf of the city? And so are you testifying on the things that we've agreed that we support, or how is that working these days? And then, the, here's the deal on the traffic bill. The bill, sponsored by Senator Jenny Forehand, would require a person receiving a payable traffic citation to affirmatively request a trial in district court. Under current law, Maryland is the only state that automatically schedules a trial date for a person getting a traffic ticket. This antiquated system requires law enforcement officers to spend countless hours in district court for trials where a person may not show up. The result is millions of dollars in wasted overtime payments and law enforcement officers being pulled off the streets.
Thank you.
So, it's, it's just, it's changing it so that they have to affirmatively request it so. We save money on people who wouldn't have gone anyway.
Sounds kind of like the 48 Hours thing for landlords and tenants.
Oh, I hope not.
I do want to mention that there, that anytime there's a letter of support sent or anyone testifying on behalf of the city, it is to be on a position that the city's taken a position on in the past. If there's not a position on record on that type of subject, then it's, it comes before you to decide if you want to move forward on it. The ones that, there's often bills that say it authorizes municipalities to do something in the future. We always support those saying that we'd like to have more options. At some point, doesn't mean that's what we would do. But everything else does need to be consistent with the past position of the council.
So, what was the point of the question?
I just wanted to know what the process was, because you're talking about going to testify about bills that, like this, this paper is the first that I've heard of them. So, that was why I wondered. You already signed up to go testify for things that I haven't heard anything about.
We just wanted to know if you were going to be a loose cannon or whether you were a player.
Well, maybe he goes and testifies as Bruce Williams, maybe he goes and testifies as Mayor Bruce Williams, who's representing Mayor Bruce Williams, as, or maybe he's testifying on behalf of the entire city council. I don't know. That's what the question is.
In this instance, you're talking about condominiums? Because that's the only one.
You were talking, yeah, that's, that's, the two that we've got.
I've testified as representing the city and MML. I've testified as Mr. MML. I do it, I wear different hats.
Yeah, I'm asking you specifically in reference to these things.
I think it was a good question, and I've testified as an individual and been chastised for that, too, so.
Yeah, it is something that, it's easy in the, in the very fast pace of the legislature to sometimes get caught into testifying or supporting something that hasn't been taken a position, but I do try to double-check on things. If something doesn't seem like we've taken a position on it, I want to make sure that it's brought to you. Before we do.
You got any more?
That's it.
I think I just had, I had circled a couple of them, and I want to make sure I can cover them. Another one that MML is opposing that I just wanted to bring to your attention, which my first inclination was to support, but the more there was discussion, I kind of agreed with the opposition, which is HB 1000, which is called Vehicle Laws, Police Vehicles Engaged in Traffic Stops, Video Recording Systems. It would compel jurisdictions to put a camera in every car. And the reason that MML is opposing is that it would cost about $6,000 a car, and nobody's got the money, and if they're going to tell us to do it, where's the money? We may want to do it, and we can go ahead and do it. Another one that MML, we had a lot of discussion about, that MML is going to support with amendments, is HB 1301, and that's about access to public records, electronic documents. And it all hinged about saying that jurisdictions would have to supply, would have to fulfill freedom of information requests for electronic document, for documents. If it was available in its native format, you would be required to give it in its native format. The Clerks, the Clerks Association supported this, but the difficulty was all about, if you, if you have to give it in its native format, I took it to mean, as an example, if it was a Word document and you gave them the Word document, you could end up giving them not just the final version, but all versions, and then you could see all of the various drafts and who said what, and that's not what this was about. It was about giving them an electronic document. And then somebody said, well, you know, give them a PDF, and it's like, but that doesn't matter, because WordPerfect, you can edit PDFs. So it's all about what's editable and how they can change what is supposed to be your final document, and whether they can see all the drafts and comments. So that, it got down to that, and that was, it was like, okay, work this out with amendments. Of course, we want to give electronic documents, but we don't want to give all of that work And I had, I've been involved in some conversations on SB 285, which is the Smart, Green, and Growing Sustainability, Sustainable Communities Act that the governor put in. And that's the one that is combining the Neighborhood Business Works and Community Legacy, and the concern on that one, my understanding is about the historic preservation credits. And I talked with Delegate Hickson on Friday about it, and what the information she gave me, which didn't quite square with what I had heard other places, was that the, the commercial credit program and the residential credit program are different, and that the funding is in good shape on the residential one, but the one that's going to expire and is a problem is the commercial one. And I'm not sure whether that is the case or not. And I was going to do some investigating on that, but haven't had time.
Yeah, if, for the, for the others, this is a bill that tries to group a variety of programs so that if you're eligible kind of for one in your geographic area, you can be eligible for others.
And it would also make available... And it would also make available funding under these programs for buildings that maybe didn't qualify for, in the case of a historic preservation credit, maybe they weren't a historic building, but they were surrounded on, you know, three or four sides in a district by historic buildings, that it might roll in funding for them under that as well. So, that, that one is in play, up for grabs, lots of discussion on it. Questions? Comments? Anything else you have?
Nope.
We're adjourned.